Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, August 7th. It is now 7:00 PM. Town council meeting. The town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Heavenly Father, you've gathered here this evening as your humble servants. We seek to represent the good citizens of the town of West Warwick with honor and integrity. May all of our efforts be blessed with your wisdom. May our personal faith give us the strength to act honestly and accordingly in all matters that come before us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum.
I'd like to make a motion to move these bins, whatever has to do with the bins we've been discussing up front, because a lot of people, I got emailed today, that they have to leave early. So if I can get a second on that.
I'll second it.
M? Recycling bins, please. Is that right?
Move M up front. I don't know why my name's on here as sponsoring it, but whatever it is.
I have a motion and a second call. A favor to move the letter N to begin?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Lichardi.
Motion to move...
Motion to move recycling bins for discussion.
I'll second the motion.
That should be here. The fees, which should come after the first three items on the ordinances, and then the fees are the fees I just put together to give for resolution for the council to make a decision on what they want to do for the fees. But in order to get to that, you've got to have the first couple of ordinances for second reading, because you'll be passing fees without having the ordinances at least.
So we have to discuss the ordinances first?
Well, the ordinances are just here for second reading. So they shouldn't have any problem with that. Right now, you've got...
Well, I guess some people wanted to speak in favor or against the fees because they wanted to explain what was going on with different organizations.
All I'm suggesting is that you take item J, K, J, K, and...
To be honest with you guys, if we go through this, it should go pretty quick, except, depending on the movie.
All right, just go through.
So I just thought from F and move on. We're on second reading for a lot of us.
Yeah, I withdraw the motion.
One second.
I'll second.
All in favor to draw?
Aye.
Now we're on F.
Okay. Ordinance number 2018-22, second reading, sponsored by Councilman Messier, an ordinance approving an extended tax exemption and stabilization program for 69 Washington Street.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, discussion. Just state your name for the ranking.
Good evening, members of the council. John Dorsey, I'm the receiver for the property at 69 Washington Street.
Anybody have any questions? I know Councilman Lichardi, you weren't here last meeting, so you might have some. Does anybody else in the council?
Yeah, I received some phone calls too, but Jason, you can speak first.
Yes, so have I. This whole thing with tax stabilization, you know, I've been going back and forth. I realize what we want to do. We want businesses in town. We want, namely, Arctic has been the topic, businesses to thrive. And it's fantastic, I'm all for that. But there's a lot of businesses in town that can't make it. And the way I see it, and I compared this a while ago, I made the comparison that everybody faces, when you go with a cable company, do you go with Verizon, or do you go with Cox, you with Direct TV? And not to get personal, I've had Verizon for 10 years, and I see all these things come out where a new customer gets $60 a month, $70 a month, and I'm paying $175 a month. So when you call up, you know, you mean nothing to them because you're not a new customer. So it almost feels like in town, and this is the sentiment I'm getting from a lot of people, that, you know, people have been around here for 10, 20, 30, 40 years doing business, and they don't get a tax stabilization. And these new businesses come in, no offense, but these new businesses come in, and they don't have to pay any taxes. And then the first year, they pay a couple thousand, third year, $3,000, fourth year, $4,000. What about the people that are paying $8,000, $9,000, $10,000 right now? The people who have really made West Warwick what it is? So I am conflicting with this because it doesn't matter what business it is coming in. It's almost like we're pushing the old ones out and bringing the new ones in, and begging the new ones to come in.
With no taxes.
With no taxes. So who makes up for those taxes? And we already had 3.6% this year.
Could you explain, because this...
You know what I'm saying?
We're actually going to be making more taxes once this building's completed than we're making right now. It's just going to be less than what it could have been, correct?
Correct, and I understand the councilman's concern in making sure that if there is a situation where there is some type of stabilization, that it's really for the right purposes. And I think in this particular case, it is. And just to explain my role with the property as the receiver, I was appointed by the municipal court to really try and do two things. And the first thing was to deal with the public nuisance issues at the property, which I know all of the council is aware of. And that was accomplished. The property's at least been demolished to a point where it's not a safety hazard at the time being. But my second responsibility was to try and work with the owner to come up with a plan to see if there was some viable economic redevelopment for the property. The taxes, as they would currently be assessed and paid, are not substantial in the grand scheme of the property. But under this tax stabilization, this is really an economic redevelopment effort. The owner has worked with me to put together his proposed plans. We've gone in front of the redevelopment agency, who has given approval of this project, one of the contingencies being to the town council's consideration of the tax stabilization. So while it's called a tax stabilization because we don't have a better vehicle for it, what it's really meant to do is this is an economic redevelopment effort to generate, at the end of the day, more revenue for the town. To get there, the owner is going to need a stabilization because of the history of this property. And we discussed a little bit at the last meeting, there are some strings tied to that. So it's not a, if the council is inclined to approve the tax stabilization, it's not just an open-ended shot at this, there are some strings tied to it that the owner will have to perform.
My only concern is the next person that comes up, doesn't have to be in Arctic, could be in Phoenix, could be in Crompton, could be right down the street, and they come up and they say, "I want to move into town. I can't do it without having a tax stabilization." Are we going to say, we have to say yes at that point?
We did it next door. Can I say something?
Angelo was actually next.
Yeah. And again, John, I appreciate the work. I understand what the councilman's saying, because I've received the same calls and I feel the same way. And I'll use for an example, down on Cana Street, where my family business has been for over 103 years, we have 42 businesses there. We have no tax stabilization. People who were there were there for 50, 60 years, and their taxes keep continuing to grow. And later on in the agenda, I have something else on here also. They can't afford to pay any more taxes. We have very little room for growth. And the growth that we do have, we're giving tax stabilizations where it's, if they don't pay their taxes, the town's going to take the property and do what they have to do to try. I mean, I've been here in Arctic for the past 30 years. My opinion, there's nobody coming in. And we had our chance, I was on a planning board then in 2000, whatever it was, 3, 4, 2, 5, nothing ever became of it. And it seems like we're jumping at the end of the rainbow, and there's no rainbow out there. And people don't have the money to keep existing in this town. People can't pay their taxes anymore. Businesses that kept this town thriving for the past 100 years, and I understand where they're coming from, because I feel the same way, not only being a councilman, being and hearing their arguments, but being a business owner, three business owners in this town, and I can't do it anymore. So it's sort of like people that don't understand how this stabilization works. It's a slap in the face to the businesses. And as much as I want to see businesses thrive, but they have to pay their due share, like every one of us paid for the past 100 years, or 50 years, or 40 years. And all it's doing is putting the burden on the businesses that have been here that are moving out daily. So that's where I'm coming from, and I know that's where Jason's is coming from. And I don't know, I need some more...
Mr. Dorsey, could you explain in detail the stabilization?
I know what the stabilization falls for. We did it with the Royal Mills, where'd that get us?
Hold on. It got us a fully occupied building, and that's what I want to point out. We did it with Royal Mills, '05.
And I was against that when I was on the planning board.
He was the gentleman that was actually here. We did it with Lipit Mill, we've done it with Crimson Rose, we've done it with the highest-paying tax company here in West Warwick. They're still here. They've got a tax stabilization when they came here, it's over now, but that company would not have been here.
And how about Crimson Rose when they moved out?
But they're still here, Angelo. They, then their roof collapsed, that's why. Again, and I'm not sure if they moved back in once they got the roof fixed, I don't recall if they did or didn't, but their doggy bauwau up in Ward 5, that was a tax stabilization. That came back, you don't know how many people I know who go there and drop their dog off and say it's a wonderful facility. Tax stabilization also helps with growth. Yes, I totally agree with what both of you were saying as far as, you know, everybody's paying, but like I said, there are some companies here in town that would not have been here. And they are the highest tax-paying companies because they receive those tax stabilizations in this town, in this community. So in one hand, yes, I understand, it does affect the taxpayers, but later on, that growth is here for the taxpayers. Now, if that's an empty lot, nothing's happening there, you're going to get your $30-something hundred dollars a year. Right now, he's already put a payment schedule here, within 10 years, you're going to be 100% on the tax roll, where it could still be an empty lot, gentlemen.
And what happens, let me ask you one other question, Dave. What happens when that, you give me a tax stabilization, I get it for 10 years, 10 years, I say, "You know what? I'm done. I'm leaving. I'm going bankrupt." Now, not only does that turn out to Section 8 or whatever, and believe me, we're over our limit on Section 8, this is probably what got us into this trouble to begin with, where you're supposed to be at 8%, we're probably, Ernie, do you know offhand, 16%, 17%? And nothing against Section 8, I have nothing at all against that, but what it looks like we're going is in a way a central falls, where there's more people getting things than actual people that are generating taxes for us. And as a businessman, I see where they're coming from, because we went from, in the past eight years, we went from 12th highest taxes to third highest taxes in the state, and I hear, "Well, the five-year plan didn't work, because we didn't raise taxes the way we were supposed to." God, thank you that we didn't, because the people we got just hanging on wouldn't be hanging on anymore, and then you'd have more buildings that different people are coming in and trying to get a tax stabilization. So maybe that's good 10 years down the road, but where does that, from now till 10 years, get us?
So I do agree with what you're saying, especially when you give us the analogy of Cox Cable, it drives me crazy. I'm also with Verizon, I'm not doing a pitch, but it drives me crazy when I see these like, you know, "Sign on now, get it for $80," and I'm paying three times that a month. But I would look at this from a different angle. I think that we need to develop Arctic, Phoenix, I think that we're not getting developers who are stepping up. So when we have the opportunity to be competitive with other cities and towns, it's not so strange to offer certain incentives. I look at someone like the owner of 69 Washington Street as a business owner who will be here for several years, and yes, we might not be giving the pre-existing owners some sort of incentive, but we give him the incentive to get in place, to build, to put something new, something fresh in Arctic, to maybe keep that redevelopment moving, and it will benefit us in the long run. I mean, yes, we have to think about today, but we also have to think about tomorrow.
I agree, John, with thinking about the future, but...
We gave incentives to the post office, I think you guys voted for that.
But you can't, you can't neglect what's around us. What's around us is the past and the present. The past built us, the present's here. So what are we doing for those businesses? Are we doing anything for them?
Yeah, raising their taxes.
No, we're raising their taxes.
Right, and I agree with that. I totally, totally agree with that, but...
So when they move out, the new business comes in with a new stabilization. I mean, I just went around Queestead Avenue today, and I'm not going to mention any names, but there's four businesses that closed down before the beginning of the summer, and they were closed between Ward and 5. I mean, and the reason...
And people aren't coming quickly, right? So why not create incentives for people to come here, to build here, to create something new here, something fresh here? They're not quick to line up, that's the truth.
I agree with that.
We're limited on how much growth we have. We're not the city, the town of Coventry, where they have thousands of acres of land, where they can advertise in the New York Times or the Boston Globe, wherever they're going to advertise and say, "Free land, put up a $100,000 square foot building." We don't have a $100,000 square foot building in the town of West Warwick. So I see where you guys are coming from, but it's always, the tax burden goes on the businesses that are already here. Obviously, bringing in these new businesses is not lowering our taxes, it's increasing our taxes. So that's what I'm worried about. The history of this town, the six generations that the Padula family's been in this town, probably longer than anybody sitting up on this council chambers.
Actually, my family's been here since probably 20th century.
Well, congratulations, then. You should be fighting with the people.
I'm here, so you're not the only one with family roots.
I didn't say family roots. I said over 103 years being in business, and there's not too many businesses in town that's 103 years old. And it might just be a salvage yard, but I paid somebody's salary for years. That's all. I'm just saying my opinions, I'm saying with my constituents, that's why I get elected year after year after year, because I do stick up for my constituents. So take it as it's worth, I'm just giving an idea, and Councilman Lichardi's saying the same thing, and we're just venting on what they're venting to us on, and they're 100% correct. And I understand, I'm not disagreeing with any of you up here, but I'm sick of hearing about Arctic. When we had our chance to develop Arctic, and none of you were up here then, except for David, where it was a political move, where certain council people didn't like the developer...
No, that was before my time.
Well, it was my time.
You were on the planning board, I wasn't.
Right. And it went down the tubes, and you know what I'm talking about.
Well, again, and that developer came here a year and a half ago, looking to develop, and everybody was gung ho. Well, everybody was gung ho about giving him 20 years tax-free. This isn't tax-free, ladies and gentlemen, this is taxes coming in. And then last year, this developer comes in that was going to develop Arctic, wanted two pieces of property and give 20 years tax-free. And you guys voted yes for 20 years tax-free, so I'm a little confused. And because of what happened with the post office, we put a timetable on this project in order to get these incentives.
That's correct. That's one thing that I think is a distinction between, I understand the concern for making sure that if there are some types of tax stabilization, that it's the right types of projects.
John, believe me, I'm not voting against this tax incentive. I'm just getting a point across where I'm sick of the businesses that have been here to get kicked in the backseat. They should be in the front seat, driving the vehicle, not in the backseat and worried about what five of us are doing, because it's getting harder and harder and harder. And I'm not against a tax stabilization. I'm expressing my opinion, well, my facts, on what's happening, and it's nothing to do with you, nothing to do with the developer on 69 Washington Street, it's just that some of us got to wake up and find out what's actually happening, because if you've got a $2,000 budget a month at home, you don't go spend $4,000 and try to make a plan. You have to have the money coming in, and we're not. And the easiest way to do this is to raise taxes. Well, you know what? We're up to here with taxes.
Understood.
Any other comment? Any comment from the council? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Angelo?
Yes.
Jay?
No.
John?
Yes.
Jay? Yes. And I vote yes.
Ordinance number 2018-17, second reading, sponsored by Councilman Lichardi, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the code of ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
I'll second.
Moving second, discussion?
You said 2018-17? It's 27.
27.
All right.
How?
I assume that this is the one that John Renaro had before you, where a number of years ago, John came before the council, and it was a three-unit building that he changed, and they put a hairdresser in, it was changed into a business. Since then, the hairdresser has left, they've done two years of trying to rent it, they can't rent it as a commercial establishment, and John's back before you asking that it be brought back to residential. It came before the planning board, the planning board unanimously sent a favorable recommendation to the council, and a month or so ago, the council gave it first reading.
Any other questions for the council?
No.
Any public comment? Hearing none, roll call vote. Angelo?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jay? Yes. And I vote yes.
Amplifier loudspeaker, and Dan Slade, Dan, resolved that the town council hereby approves the following application, the Tuxit Valley Preservation and Historical Society, attention Cecilia A. St. Jean and Jerry Tellier, date September 9th, 2018, rain date September 16th, 2018, time 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, location 1679 Main Street.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ayes have it.
Amplifier loudspeaker, and theatrical performances, shows, and exhibitions, resolved that the town council hereby approves the following application, Stallwork Films LLC, attention Jay Peter Gonzalez, dates September 5 through...
Through 3/31.
Through, sorry, through 3/31/19, location 27 Home Street, 98 New England Avenue, 39 Musket Road, and West Warwick High School, 1 Webster Night Drive.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion, Al?
Yeah, the town manager asked me to kind of oversee this, and I met on two occasions with the movie company and had absolutely nothing but total cooperation from them. First thing I want to point out is that the reason for those dates, which is kind of unusual, is that the filming goes over a period of time, there's going to be six episodes, so that rather than having to come back before you every month for the dates coming up in our discussion, it was felt that it's best to give them that blanket period. In meeting with Peter, who is here, he is fully aware that if passed by this council, the approval is subject to, they're working with our police and our fire department, we've already discussed that, they're in complete compliance with that. In addition, they agree that they will be filing a $2 million bond to protect the town from any liability. Mr. Gonzalez is here, if you have any questions, and all I can tell the council is that my dealings with both he and other members of his team have been extremely cooperative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Again, I'll attest to what Al said, I know I met with everybody one time, and there are a lot of questions, because this is the first time that we really had to deal with something in this situation, and very cooperative, has worked well with the town. Paula, every time Paula's asked for something, it's come here immediately, so, and I think you notified all the butters, so I'm sure they'll have some questions too, but...
To give the council a bit of the cooperation, we called them on a Tuesday and informed them that they had a list, had to give us a list of the 200-foot butters for all four people by Wednesday. They were here, they did that, so Thursday, to put it in the timeframe, Paula was able to get the notices out.
Thank you. Any public comment? Anybody from the public? Mike? Just state your name and address for the...
Mike Burgoyne, Ford Duke Street. I actually echo your comments. My wife met with him and his crew and everybody else, and they were very respectful, very nice. My only concern, and it's just a concern, is that it's a small street, so I just would ask that, you know, the traffic, the parking, garbage, stuff like that, just be, you know, consideration. I just kind of wanted to voice my opinion. But as far as this is concerned, I'm actually really excited about this. So this looks like a good thing for the town, looks like a good thing for West Warwick as a whole, so.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I've got the book, but I didn't read it yet, because it's a lot of pages for J. Messier to read. My son bought me the book also, so. I buy it, I took it at the library.
I haven't read the book.
Any other producer?
Shame on you.
All right, with that being said, no public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Good luck.
Good luck.
Order.
And thank you for the prayer today, that was great. I don't see that anymore. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Ordinance number 2018-23, second reading, sponsored by Councilman Messier, an ordinance amending Section 5.6, supplement use regulations of the zoning code of the code of ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
This is the first ordinance that we found that it corrects the error in the zoning code regarding supplemental accessory uses. See if it's second passage.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment? Hearing none, roll call vote. Angelo?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance number 2018-24, as amended, second reading, sponsored by Councilman Messier, an ordinance amending Article 1, general provisions, Section 3 definitions, and Sections 5, use regulations of the zoning code of the code of ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
This was the ordinance that, up until now, there was no provision in our zoning code for recycling bins, therefore they were prohibited. This just places them in the business districts.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Angelo?
Yes.
Hold on, hold on.
Hey, I have one question. We're talking about recycling bins, we're talking about the yellow and, hang on a minute, we have a JKL, and we have a donation collection permit, and then Angelo wanted to bring up something else on the recycling bins. We have a lot of things together. What, can you please clarify what we're talking about?
These are the bins that you see throughout the town, throughout the state, where people go and they deposit things within the bins. This came about beginning with Councilman Messier, with the mess, so what this proposes is that if you're going to have one of those bins, you've got to register it with the town so that we can keep track of it. When that mess is there, the next ordinance gives us the provisions to make sure it gets cleaned up, if you don't have a permit, for us to get rid of it. It's basically an ordinance so that we know where the bins are and that they're being properly, and we change...
And the fees will come up later?
Well, yeah, the fee will come up later. We changed the name of it, I worked with David on that, and we used the name that tries to, you know, recycling bins, dumpsters, there was some confusion, so we put it into the donation, collection, recycling bin, meaning the type of bin where people are donating.
Donating clothes.
So all this ordinance is to allow bins in town, and then we're going to talk about who pays the fee and who doesn't?
Yes.
Correct?
This ordinance, the one you're on now allows them in town, the next one gives the town the power to regulate them.
And who pays?
That comes next.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, roll call vote. Angelo?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five, as amended, second reading sponsored by Councilman Messier and ordinance amending Chapter Ten, Licenses and Business Regulations. Article fourteen, Recycling Bins of the Code Of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, discussion, Al?
This is the one that gives the town the power to regulate if there's a mess or if they're not registered. Gives the town, right now, we have no authority. If there's a mess there, it falls on either the building office or Public Works to go out and clean the mess. We really can't enforce it. We gotta go through the town court, the municipal court. This puts teeth in it.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment? Anna? Just state your name and address for the record.
Anna Spodnik, Carpenter Court. At the last meeting, I had asked a question and I was promised a follow-up and it has to do with the bins and I'm not sure if this is the exact time to ask it, but it seems to fit. Did we find out how the bins are on town property and nobody's been paying us for it?
Yes, after the last meeting, there were two sets of bins on town property. The first is on one oh six Hay Street, which is next to the animal shelter. There are two bins there. One is Planet Aid and the other, I believe, is a white bin with no identification on it. There's also three bins going into the civic center area
Right.
on the side of the road. Those are two blue, one pink, and those are, I have the name of the company, Recyclers. So we contacted Planet Aid and asked information about the placement of the bin on town property. Their response was in two thousand fifteen, a contract was entered into to place the bin there.
Which location, the civic center?
I'm sorry, on the animal shelter, the animal shelter location.
Okay.
Just the Planet Aid.
Yeah.
So they indicated that there was an agreement that was signed and this, I think, September of two thousand fifteen and the bin was installed or located there October of two thousand fifteen.
Who is this contract with, did they state?
Well, they forwarded, I asked for a copy of the contract and the, most of the contract was not legible.
Of course.
It was smeared, couldn't read it.
Mm-hmm.
And I got pictures, it's very difficult to read. Some things I could read. It was signed by one of our animal control officers. And the fee arrangement, which I couldn't read, was the five cents a pound of the items that were, you know, taken. And that was to be paid by the town quarterly, to the town quarterly. So we had requested a copy of a payment history to start where we're gonna go.
Can I just interrupt for a minute? When was that contract signed?
Two fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen.
September fifteenth. So we did get, actually, I got a copy of the payment history today and there were payments made, but not starting in September of fifteen.
Okay.
Started a later date.
What date was that?
Just give me a moment, I'll probably in a different section of my mind right here.
Who was the animal control officer to sign that?
He's going through one section, let him get to the other.
Yeah, it was, oh, your part, yes.
And what right did she have to sign a contract?
That's a question.
Don't go crazy. I mean, was this substantial amounts that they're paying?
When we throw them out, tell them to go off the worry for signing the contract.
Well, the quarterly payments that I saw were maybe thirty dollars, less than that, twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars.
And we're throwing them out when?
Well, again, I wanted to see what the actual contract is. I asked for a copy of a clean contract, as clean as they could be.
Well, whatever the contract is, it's not valid because it wasn't signed by an official of the town.
That's correct.
I mean, I would just toss them out. Let's move on to the next bin.
So anyway, so that's the story with that.
Okay.
So funds were remitted to town, starting, I think it was in sixteen, sometime in sixteen. But again, yeah, it was signed by the animal control officer and you would think all contracts would be signed by the town manager.
Yeah, you would think.
But anyway, so that's the story with that, that bin. The other bin, I contacted the president of the recyclers, I have all my information there, the company, recyclers of Rhode Island, I believe, and he indicated that bin was placed there at some point. There is no contract that I'm aware of unless he can, you know, produce one and we had a conversation about that.
Is this at the civic center or is this the second one at the animal shelter?
This is still at the animal shelter.
Okay.
It's the same owner of both, the animal shelter for the colored ones as the civic center.
Okay.
And I said, what was the payment arrangement for that bin? And the payment arrangement was no formal dollars exchanged. It was more of a...
If we feel like paying you.
Well, it was donations to the animal shelter, food, items.
Do they have proof of this?
I do not have that.
You do?
There may be, but I don't have it.
And let's move on to the civic center.
Then we move on to the other ones.
Ernie, can I trip you? How many companies are we dealing with?
My inquiry was to two companies and...
Just two.
Do you mean like townwide or just for these ones on town property?
Town property.
Just the ones on town.
For free.
Let me say that assuming the town solicitor finds the contract invalid, this is...
Can we? Al, can we let Nicole, just state your name for the record.
Thank you.
Nicole Knotts, Solid Waste and Recycling Coordinator for the town. Every year, I have to fill out a report for the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation on deferment and prices that we go through the town for our bins, what our recycling program is, and most of all though, it's the tonnage of deferred trash that we do for the town. That would be your scrap metal, your tires, your hard plastics, the recycling, of course, and also your soft good textiles, which is what is being collected in these recycling bins. When I received the number, I processed it, I wrote it into our form and I actually got a phone call back from Kristen Littlefield, she's the director, one of the directors for the Rhode Island Resource Recovery, stating, are you positive that is the right amount? Called the gentleman back. It was over a hundred thousand pounds of textiles that were deferred from the landfill for the town of West Warwick. When it was confirmed that, we were one of the highest amount of tons deferred in the state. So I definitely agree it needs follow-up and in fact, we did have an issue with Riviera Avenue and I actually did send a notice of violation to the owner of the property and we had Nega Disposal clear up some of the problems that we had during the bulk pickup when I was doing that. So I have been on, I had been on that. The thing is, is the tonnage that is deferred is saving in this town so much money. So it definitely needs regulation. I think that's a great idea, but we don't wanna throw them out. The, especially now, we started with our contract trash a few years ago, probably in the two thousand fifteen, I believe it was thirty-two dollars a ton, I think we were paying for trash disposal. It's gone up to thirty-seven. Now we're up to forty-seven dollars per ton of trash, possibly going to fifty-two dollars a ton. Hundred thousand pounds is a lot of money to eat all over again. That is a blessing. That is thousands and thousands of dollars' worth of savings through these textile bins.
But Nicole, you cannot have these people coming in here with no license, no control and what the people could do is give it to a charitable organization and I don't think that, I don't think that will cost us another dime. So for you to say that if we throw them out, that it's gonna cost us more money, I disagree with you because they don't belong in this town unless we approve them to be in this
What we would need to do is figure out another...
Well, we know what we need to do.
Well, no, find another out for our textiles because what's going to happen is those textiles aren't gonna be in those dumpsters, they're going to be in the trash cans. That's what I'm thinking of.
Well, I think people that take time to go put them in these bins, thinking that they're giving them to somebody that's gonna use them, is gonna go to Big Sisters, is gonna go to the veterans homes, is gonna go to...
These items are sorted, you know that, right? These, the, how it works with these soft goods textiles dumpsters is all textiles are allowed, whether they're wearable or not. So as long as they're clean and sent free, you can drop any textile in these dumpsters. At that point, what they do is they sort the wearable. The wearable goods get sorted out and donated. The non-wearable textiles are what they get profit for, for the sort and they end up recycling that into different goods. They rip the fabrics up. So it does get sorted, they do get donated. It's just how they separate it. So that, to say that they don't donate, they do. It's through their sorting process.
I disagree.
But somebody...
It's not a donation.
Exactly.
It's a donation of people giving their clothing to the...
Somebody ha... In any business, Red Cross is a business, you have to make money, but yet they're donating money, no matter what, it is a business.
They shouldn't be making money off the town of West Warwick having on private spots because if that's the case, I'll have an auto salvage drop-off at the high school for junk cars and I'll pick them up once a month. I mean, it's, it has to be regulated.
But I don't understand.
It has to be controlled.
You're not, that's not a deferred, I mean, if you were to drop it off at the Department of Public Works where we would then get that tonnage deferred, Angelo, that's great. See, this is counting against our tonnage fees.
I think the issue is just regulation, not...
Exactly.
Which I think is fantastic.
That's what we're trying to do.
There is another program that I did wanna bring up that maybe we could actually have a board, I had mentioned to you. It is a new recycling, clothing, recycling person, group that would actually pick off up curbside, but it would be something that I would probably have to sit with the board and actually create a board. But that could also be an option to defer textiles without having to go through any of these bins.
We talked about, it'd be like, we leave it out once a week and they would, somebody
Every resident receives a pink bag. If you've got something, you leave it on the curb, they come through regularly. But that's what, I wanted to mention there is another option as well. But I just want to let you know that we do save through the tonnage that we're saving from deferred tons.
Thank you.
Okay?
It's just...
But we also, Ernie, could be making money on this. If they're making money, they're gonna give us money. So I don't think that one company or two companies or three companies should have carte blanche and bring these dumpsters wherever they are. So I'm totally against that, no matter what is set here and we're here to settle that and to generate money for the town, no matter who it may be.
Right, just...
So the civic center one, you have that information?
Yeah, well, I just wanna follow up the, just as I indicated, two thousand fifteen, the contract was signed by an A C O. It was delivered, the bin October of two thousand fifteen, written agreement, which is not legible, but it has some parts you can see.
That's the animal shelter one, right?
Yeah, animal shelter and billing history did arrive and the checks were mailed to the eleven sixty-two Main Street, which is the police department and the payee of the check was the West Warwick Animal Shelter. The white bin is owned by the recycling associates and they own three bins at the civic center entrance, two light blue, a pink. I called Mr. Marinelli, who is the president of the organization. He indicated to me that the approval was given approximately ten years ago by the school committee. I spoke to...
But the school committee doesn't own that property.
I'm giving you the history here.
Okay.
So I spoke with the superintendent and she did some research and there were some minutes from March of two thousand and nine where the school committee approved the placement of the bins, but in regards to any revenue, the minutes only reflect a little bit of money would be provided back to the school and they are attempting to look and see if any funds have been submitted to the school. The much, most of, I think all the staff at the time administratively has turned over, so they're not, we're not familiar with this. But that's the situation with the ones at the...
At the civic center.
At the civic center and at the animal shelter. So again, it is town property and to the best of my knowledge, there is no agreement, specific agreement
Yeah.
with the Rhode Island Recycling, Recyclers of Rhode Island.
So I mean, it's from a business advantage perspective. These people have had these bins on the civic center property all these years, not paying the town a dime, nobody paying attention, they're making money hand over fist and we're sitting here saying, no big deal, this has to stop. I mean, you could technically say that anybody can, like Angelo said, he can go set up a stop to pick up parts.
That's why we're trying to put these ordinance...
No, I agree, I'm supporting this.
I'll take all the way goods for free.
I'm sorry?
I'll take all the way goods for free. Who does that benefit?
Exactly.
What do we get?
Exactly.
Nothing.
It's just, I think that, you know, a stand should be taken for people that have done this and not give one particular company carte blanche, like you said, to be on town property. They're, they've been there doing something that they shouldn't have been doing and they've been basically making money all along while they're doing it. I would have them remove the bins, do, go through the whole registration process and then get pre-approved again to put them on that property. I don't personally think they belong on town property. Unless they come up with an extreme amount of money that they wanna pay this town, they don't belong there.
If this is something that we're going to go forward with...
They should have been on it. If they wanna be on town property, just like the town center...
Guys, just remember what the town manager said. It was approved by another board that approved those bins.
Right.
But it was approved by the school department.
Well, hang on, hang on.
No jurisdictions.
This is, this is brought up to the council. I'm all for the bid process.
I am too.
So if we're going to, if we're going to agree to allow these, continue to allow these on town property, I think we put this out to bid.
Exactly.
And we see what the most money we are gonna get.
Al, let me ask you one question. When this ordinance goes into place, any bins that are out there now, will they have to come before us now for them to be legal within the town?
What I was gonna say is I will defer the tip as to the validity of these two contracts.
And not even just the town property, I mean, any bins that we have in this town right now, we're gonna have to come before the council, right?
Okay, let's stick with those two.
Okay.
Because there's apparently contracts out.
No, there is no contract for the civic center, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, there's no civic center. The animal shelter one.
The animal plant.
It was done by a resolution from the school committee.
Gave them permission. I'm saying I will leave that to the town. Solicitor determine whether or not the town has any, is bound in any way by those agreements. If they are not, then answer your question. We start all over, they gotta be permitted. When I say permitted, I'm not...
But even any of them, I mean, let's say, for example, the one, like the one on...
Everybody else, as of second reading, they gotta come and get it permitted.
They gotta come and get it permitted. And what are we gonna do as a council to enforce that? Are we gonna reach out to all of these bins and let them know that this has been passed and they need to come before?
You would put them on notice.
Yeah.
Indicating that they're either gonna remove the bin within a reasonable time or they're gonna come in and get a license. And the town has to remove it as part of the licensing, there'll be a fee paid.
Okay.
But it's public property. Al, this particular regulation relates to only private property, correct? Not public property? The regulation that you're proposing...
There is no distinction.
Okay, so the fact of the matter is, if you've got voidable or void contracts, they have to be put on notice for the same thing, remove them or renegotiate, other one way or the other, within a reasonable amount of time, you're either gonna have a new contract or you're gonna have, uh, nothing there.
And I don't, and I agree with you as far as on the town property, but...
I believe...
Someone's, someone's gonna have to inventory the location of all these...
Have we, have we, have we got, I didn't know, Sal, you were looking into, did we ever get a number of how many, how many bins that were in the town?
Not a complete list, yes, it's finished as...
Okay.
...to the city.
Do you know how long that's gonna take?
Eight square miles.
A month or two.
A month or two?
Okay.
For eight square miles?
It's a while to go through the town, stop, try and see if there's any...
All right, my, my...
All right, Sal, thank you.
My thought is, if, if the ordinance passes, then put out notices, whatever kind of notice you have to, to say you gotta get regulated, and you gotta get, uh, permit. If they don't, there's provision in here that we can get rid of the bins, and they, they come...
How many days after the, after this reading will we be able to send notice to them? Is this immediate, 45 days?
Upon failure, remove the bin within 72 hours. Notice, uh, they get fined in a hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, but as soon as this, there's not a, there's not a, as soon as this...
The, there's no provision in here, uh...
What is the effective date? Is that what I'm asking?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
That usually comes, is set by the 20 days after the second passage.
However, we could still start reaching out to them now, letting them know in 20 days.
The easiest, the easiest way we did this, we did this with mattresses. Our DPW is on the road constantly. Wherever they see a bin in their district, and Dave, you did it in Warwick, they mark down where a bin is, the color of the bin, they get it done in a week. It's done. Every bin that's in this town of West Warwick, eight square miles minus a mile and a quarter of river. So you're looking at not even seven square miles of town that the DPW, while they're out on their route, can write that down in a matter of a week. Kevin, Kevin O used to do the streetlights before Joe came. So it's, it's a very simple situation, cost-effective, don't cost us a dime, they're doing their job, they write down, there's a bin at 27 Ocean Avenue, there's a bin, four bins in the Potax River. It's not a big deal. Everybody makes a big deal out of this, it's a simple solution, they don't belong here, you give them the notice, get them out, wheth- this council decides whether to put it up for bid on town properties, which should be. And another situation is whoever owns property wants to put a bin, they'll be responsible, and then we have to see who's gonna pay, which I think it should be the company who has the bins, to pay that landowner a certain amount of what's going on. We'll go on all night on this, it's a simple solution, nothing big, we're not gonna get hammered with garbage, it's a money-making deal, and that's the end of the story. I'm not gonna stay here for three hours.
To answer Jason's question, 30 days after the effective date.
Okay.
They gotta get them, that's when the, the building official gives notice. Either you get a permit or we take it.
Mr. Sylvester? Just need your name.
Uh, Dan Sylvester, I live at 33 Grand View Drive in West Warwick. I'm a member of St. Vincent de Paul Society, and we have some bins in West Warwick. Our bins are located at church, in, at churches. So we're not anything to do with what you're talking about. However, I am concerned, because St. Vincent de Paul, what we do is we do person-to-person help for people who have problems with their rent, their utilities, their prescriptions, and we provide help to them in those areas. And if you were to charge us, well, I heard a rumor there was a hundred, two hundred, or three hundred thou- three hundred dollars for, to place them, uh, to place these bins, then we would be devastated. And then you know that if you do that, then cities and towns in the rest of, of Rhode Island will also do it. So for us, or people like us, I would hope that you would charge a nominal fee, uh, twenty or twenty-five dollars to register, and then you will know who we are and who you can get ahold of if there is a problem at the site. And I read the provisions you have at the end for those who, uh, do not take care of their site, and I'm in agreement with all of those things at the bottom of your ordinance. It's just, it's just the first part that concerns me, uh, that you're gonna charge us to place them. And we don't want them on town property, we have them in churches.
I think, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of what you said, a nominal fee, and I think what we should increase the, is the fine if, if, for individuals that don't take care of the bins.
Fine.
That's, I mean, that's what I'm in favor of, I don't know, but I can't speak for the rest of the council, but...
Would it hurt you if the bin company got a charge? It wouldn't affect the church or the organization at all?
Well, wait.
Because they're making money, they're giving you so much on a, on, I don't know how much they're giving you, a pound.
We had problems with the bin company, so we're doing it all ourselves now. We've purchased our own, we've purchased our own, we purchased our own bins, they're all brand-new bins everywhere, and so we're, we're it.
So I, I, I think I was confused to some degree as to why you were so concerned about it. These are your bins?
Yes.
Okay. I, uh, I'm gonna jump in on this for a minute, and I hear what you're saying. I actually, when this came out, I reached out to Father Stone from St. Joseph's Church. I wanted to get his perspective as, as a local, the local priest in the local community, and exactly where the clothing goes that are in the local bins. So I don't know if you'd like to come up, Father?
Um, my name is Father Gregory Stone, I'm the pastor of St. Joseph's Church in West Warwick. I just wanted to give a little bit of, um, understanding that what St. Vincent de Paul Society does and the, how it benefits the town of West Warwick. Um, we probably, at St. Joseph's, we probably get about 15 to 20 calls for financial assistance, um, whether it be with rent or, uh, electric, um, water, literally every, every utility, uh, food. And St. Vincent de Paul, um, the St. Vincent de Paul Society is a huge help to me as, as a pastor, because most of the calls, the vast majority of the calls that are, and solicitations, are not from people that are active members of our parish, uh, but what they are is they live within the town of West Warwick. Um, our, the St. Vincent de Paul Society sends out, um, two volunteers who make a home visit to assess the need, um, and then they, then they track who, uh, receives assistance and who receives aid. Um, I mean, this week alone, it's, what is it, Tuesday? I've already gotten six calls, uh, for, in, at Directory, and I pass that information along to our local chapter of St. Vincent de Paul. The bins do provide financial assist, uh, help raise money for St. Vincent de Paul, which all comes back directly into the community. So, um, I just wanted to provide that human context when the fee was originally three hundred dollars being talked about. Like, that would be, I think there's seven or eight bins in the different Catholic churches in West Warwick, which would be, mm, two thousand dollars, twenty-four hundred dollars.
Let me ask you, do, would we have the ability as a council, if we, if we so chose to waive the fee on a, on a per, per basis?
So here's what happens, here's what happens with...
Of course, that's what, that's what this is all about. We said at the beginning, when we were bringing this up, and I spoke to Matthew about it. Matthew had a, a, a half a dozen conversations with him. When he explained, I agree with him. I agree with you, Father. And again, you can, you can waive the fees that we want, just like when, when a charitable organization has a parade, we waive the fees for certain vendors or whatever to be there. That's our prerogative, we can do it. What we wanna stop is these guys from prostituting, and, Father, excuse my language. Prostitutes, but he says enough prayers, Lord. From prostituting this town and making a, a mess. And it's not to stop the people who are doing good for our community, it's to stop the ones that are making all the money and putting it on land where a, a dog officer signed the contract. I mean, come on.
So I don't, I don't mind the fee being higher than, and as long as on a case-by-case basis in a situation like yours, where we could just waive the fee totally, you know what I mean, rather than do 25, I mean, that's, if that, if we could, is that something...
Let me just, let me just point something out.
Al's making a face, so...
Now that they brought it to our attention, that's their bins. Uh, Mr. Sylvester, I talked to on the phone, Matt, and I had a conversation also. Churches are tax-exempt and usually fee-exempt. So most of the fees that they come before us...
Don't even affect them.
They don't even affect them. So with that being their bins, there should be no fee, considered as your bin. Now, again, I agree, recycling associates and anybody else who wants to put that bin on the church, that's a different story.
They should pay the fee.
Those are your bins, you're tax-exempt, and, and I agree wholeheartedly with that. Um, again, the school committee signed into an agreement back in 2009 with the two bins or three bins up there. We need to dig further into that and find out what happened. I know you've got minutes and whatever, but there's gotta be more to it, a recording, listen to the recording with, because their minutes are recorded also. So we can go back to 2009, listen to their minutes, and find out what happened there. As far as the dog officer signing them, unfortunately, she's not here right now, so we can't even get her side of the story. Um, but again, no town employee, unless it's a department head, and before this town council should be signing any type of agreement with anybody. And I understand what she's probably doing it for is the fact that she was getting donations or money for the, uh, animal shelter and supplying food and cleaning supplies or whatever, but again...
But again, where's the record of what she got?
Well, the checks, the checks came into the police department supposedly, and, you know, I don't know how much, like you said, thirty dollars, sixty dollars, whatever it may be. He has to dig further into it, but again, she's not here to answer those questions.
May I make a suggestion to the council? That the ordinance that's before you...
Thanks, Father.
Thank you.
2018-25, as amended, is the one that puts the regulations in place. I might suggest to the council that you table it until your next meeting, give me the opportunity to review that, that ordinance of regulation, I'll call it, and since the matter for fees is just here for discussion this evening under item, uh, N1, that, that also be tabled until your next meeting, and it will give me the opportunity to see if I can put together a, a situation where if you are a charitable organization or a religious organization...
Well, I think that's a tough, that's, that's, because some of, some of these organizations are considered nonprofits, so that's why I think there should be a case by...
You know, and, and it is your bin on your property...
Yeah.
That, that, that would give the council...
But not all, but not all of these are on their, like, specific property, correct?
Well, all I'm saying is give me the opportunity to try and work something out like that.
You know what, Dave, Cozy, our new DPW director, I know, I have properties in Warwick. What, what is Warwick? I forgot exactly what they do. Maybe you can give our solicitor some information on how Warwick handles this.
I, I, good afternoon, oh, good evening, Council. Not to make it sound too simple, what we do in the city of Warwick, we would go to bid. We'd go to the highest bidder. Sometimes you don't receive any bids, opens the door for us to negotiate with these companies now. We have one location in the city of Warwick to drop off textiles. We have 49 square miles in the city of Warwick, very successful. We have it at our compost station during normal business hours, that's where you drop your textiles off. I couldn't agree more with the recycling coordinator, diversion is what it's all about. Stop sending this stuff to the landfill, give them the opportunity to drop it somewhere. But, uh, we would simply go to bid, one location, it's monitored all the time, you don't get the mess. We were competing with these, uh, businesses that had them on the road. I can tell you, I live on a, a main road, Bunton Woods Avenue in Warwick, where we had some drop-off bins at the top of the street at a little shopping center. Well, not only are they putting textiles there, they're dropping off little playground sets, mattresses. So then we moved to, fortunately for me, I was able to get into City Hall quickly, we moved with our building department against those property owners. And I can tell you what happened in the city of Warwick, a lot of those bins disappeared. It wasn't worth the trouble for that property owner to have that bin on. Churches were never a problem, you know, we were competing with the churches and all the other businesses, but diversion is the key. Make no mistake, your tip and fees are gonna keep on going up. You know, I've only been out of the business a year and it's already almost doubled. It will keep going up. I can't stress enough how much diversion's gonna save you money, but I think the key is go to bid, if you, sure.
Are you talking about the bins on...
I, I'm talking about town property. The only place we allowed a bin for town property is at our composting facility, period. That's it. And it's very successful, people do come, they will come.
That, that I think is, is easy. With, as the bins on private property, that's what the disorbitance addresses, those bins on private property.
I couldn't agree more that they, they become a mess, and I saw around the town, they do. There's no question.
My thought on that, as I said, is to, the commercial, I thought, the commercial aspect, come before the council to set fees on a commercial aspect, on the, again, I'll just say the charitable aspect, you know, church or whatever, that, I use a broad term, that the, the fee ordinance be set up, so that the council has the ability to, on a case-by-case business basis, waive those on all the commercial ones.
So I, so I like, now that I know that it doesn't, it doesn't affect them, I, I think the fees should be higher, so maybe it will make some of these people make it not worth them to even put it here.
It will.
I think we should, Ernie should definitely look in, and I know he is, looking into the bins that are on town property, and figure out if those contracts are binding, if not, get rid of them as soon as possible.
They're not binding.
All right, well, he still needs to make sure and confirm, and once we, once we confirm that they're not, we get rid of those and we move forward. I don't think there's much else to discuss about this, but...
I'll just, I'll, I send a, a memo to the council.
Thanks, Dave.
That I'll send a memo to the council within the next week as to what I, what I can put together to try and resolve what I think are the issues tonight, but so I would...
So you need a motion to table these.
Well, let's make sure, I see Matt.
A motion to ta- table...
Do you have any comment before they table it? Yes. Matt?
Matt Silva-Garifal-Tarras. Um, so to reiterate everything that Father Stone said and what Dan said, the, this money that is generated by the bins through the Society of St. Vincent de Paul stays in this area. Father is not lying when he says he receives six, seven phone calls a day. I worked in that parish office, I know he's receiving those phone calls. I myself received those phone calls as, um, someone that works for social services. So if you take these bins out and put a fee on them, which sounds like they're not going to, it's, the money stays here. Two point five million dollars were given to Rhode Islanders in 2016 through the Society of St. Vincent de Paul. So, uh, thank you for considering, you know, not charging those bins that are owned by us, because that money is staying here and it is not going somewhere else.
Matthew, thank you for bringing that to my attention, too.
I'm asking to table items 11, L and M.
I'll make a motion to table L and M.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Ayes have it.
And I will give a report to the council before you actually...
Thank you, Alfredo, I know you put a lot of work into this, thank you.
So do we need to talk about N1 and 2?
Well, because N1 and 2, all I do with that, it really doesn't take any action. I just wanted the council to see what I was proposing by the application, the information to gather from the application, and what the actual permit that would be stuck on the bins.
All right.
That, that was strictly my imagination.
So we'll put, we'll put N1 and 2 on the next agenda also.
Okay.
We're on N3, summer ice proposal, Laurie, is this you?
Thank you.
All right, so with marketing summer ice, which is something fairly new that we're gonna be doing, is the ice rink will stay open all year round. Um, there is a league that is with us. They came to me with the proposal that they're looking to sign a three-year contract, they're looking for nine weeks, mid-June to mid-August. They currently are at another facility, they're looking to bring more of their program to West Warwick, which is great for us. Um, they're looking to, for the nine weeks, they will be skating 13 hours per week for $24,000. When you break it all down, it's literally thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents an hour difference that they need. They're getting a cheaper rate at the other league, at the other facility. I do have to come to you all to agree that, you know, we're willing to give them this break for the three years on this contract. With that being said, though, if they do come here, we do agree to do this nine-week program with them, that they will also be buying an additional, I believe it's six, six hours in the winter, too. So basically, they would be with us all year long, we would be taking care of them in the summer, in the winter. They are bringing a high school premier hockey league. I guess a lot of the kids, from what they tell me, are, um, West Warwick, Coventry, Exeter, West Greenwich, so they're local kids. The concession stand would be able to make some revenue for it. Um, and then also, it's another, like, a, I guess, like a skills, skills league, so...
Laurie, let me ask you one question. It says 117 hours in total for $24,120.
Yep.
How much does it cost us per hour to run that rink?
Per hour? Um, like, it depends on if it's a full-time, part-time, basically.
Well, I mean, 117 hours, we're gonna make $24,000.
Right. Right. So right now, we charge two twenty an hour.
Okay.
So they're asking for a thirteen dollar and eighty-five cent break.
What is the breakdown on us running that rink per hour?
I don't know that number.
Well, we should know that. Ernie, can you get the dollar amount per hour? Everything. What it costs us per hour to run that rink?
So with this, Laurie, with the schedule, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday? Does that mean we're still available to open?
We're still available.
If somebody else comes in, X, Y, Z group comes in.
Yeah. So these are the only thirteen hours that they want. So we're still available all day, every day, because it's the summertime. So, I mean, right now, you know, we did start that new program with the open, the public ice skating, the hockey, the stick and puff. I mean, we're making, we're making money every week on it. And it's, it's additional revenue that we didn't have.
Was this, all right, when you said, that probably answered my question. This, when this, when the budget was submitted to us? This twenty-four thousand is after the fact of that, right?
This is after the fact.
So just to reiterate, what Angelo said.
And this is what I'm saying, is when the budget was put forth for you, it was winter ice, because we don't know what the summer ice is gonna be, because we haven't been able to market it last year, unfortunately. It, it is what it is.
Yeah.
From before to move forward.
So this is the twenty-four thousand one hundred, one hundred twenty dollar revenue? Minus the expense of the electricity, staff, all that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let me ask a question. What if, what if we have what happened last year and the ice goes down again?
That's what I was just gonna bring up. First, I, I looked at a couple of things here. It says we'll sign three contract.
Three-year contract, yep.
Three-year contract, twenty-four thousand dollars per year?
Yes.
Okay.
And now additionally, they're going to.
The next question I had was, that we brought up during the budget time, was putting a generator up there. And could we use some of this funding to possibly get a generator up there because of the fact that we lost it early last spring, and by the time we got the ice back up, it was the end of summer? I, I think that facility, in the winter it happened too, a couple of years back, where we lost power for seven days, no generator, and we lost the ice. Now, now we lose the revenue from the hockey leagues during the peak time. We lost it in the summertime. We also had issues where by the time you get a company in to paint the ice and all that, that's another twenty thousand dollars. So I think at one time, power failure up there is worth a generator all day long.
What is it, what is the cost of the job?
And that's what we need to find out.
Also, also, and now that we got David here as a full-time DPW director, I'm sure he's got the connections where they donate these generators from the military, where the town pays a penny on a dollar. So I don't think the generator will cost us, but that's why, before we start buying generators, or whatever it costs, I wanna see how much it costs us to run that rink per hour, what we're collecting, and then we'll see what the bottom line is before you spend a hundred thousand dollars and that twenty-four thousand, we're losing twelve thousand on it. Nobody knows. So I don't understand how we can see what we're making on that rink when we don't have the bottom dollar, what it costs us to run it.
I think we need more details. I'm all for more programs coming in.
I mean, we're guessing, but.
All right, so let me just put it in perspective. So the rink will be open this summer. Like, moving forward, the rink is not going to close. It's, you know, pending no catastrophes that happen. Okay, so it will be open. So right now, for revenue, we have zero dollars coming in for this summer. That's what we have. We have nothing. It wasn't sold last year. Could it have been? Yes, it probably could have been, but the idea was to take the ice out prematurely and that's, again, it is what it is. That, that situation happened, and that's what it is. So right now, we have zero dollars.
You're talking this current summer, eighteen?
I'm talking, the, the summer that just went by. Yep. Could the ice have gone up quicker? Yes, it could have. But what was the point of putting the ice in when no one sold it? So the person that was in charge of selling, which was not me, did not sell any ice.
We still paid staff to be down there?
There was.
We still, there were two staff on payroll, correct? So we had a net loss all summer.
So the cost was the same.
Okay.
So, moving forward, I'm looking to market the summer ice for two thousand and nineteen, because at this point, two thousand and eighteen, winter.
We're already paying that staff, except we're gonna have money coming in.
Yeah. So now we're gonna have money coming in. So we rent it at two hundred and twenty dollars an hour. They're asking for a thirteen dollar and eighty-five cent break. So what they wanna pay is two oh six fifteen per hour. That's what I'm asking for tonight. I'm not, I can find out everything that you need to know.
You gotta understand our point. Being a businessman, I don't guess out of that two hundred, and I, I appreciate what you're doing. This has nothing to do with you. I wanna see numbers. I wanna see what that costs us an hour to run. Maybe we're getting a profit. Maybe we're losing our shirts on it. That's why we put it up for rent one time. We, we subbed it out, because we couldn't make it. Now, before I'm even gonna make, before I even agree to anything here, I wanna see in black and white what it costs us to run that rink per hour and how much we're getting, instead of pulling numbers out of the sky, whether it's two hundred and six dollars an hour, or three hundred dollars an hour, or a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. I wanna see what it actually costs us to run that, like any businessman would do. Not hypothetically, or not guessing what we're making on this, because nobody knows. And I wanna know the answers.
The thing I, I'd like to question, moving forward, because I know everybody likes to move forward, but when another group comes in who wants a similar break or contract, whatever it may be, and they, they don't want nine weeks, they want five weeks. Or they want, I know there's no twelve weeks in the summer, but they want more than nine weeks. Do we have anything, we should have something in place for that, whether it's in a contract or?
So the contract currently rates that the rate is two hundred and twenty dollars per hour.
Per hour, per hour.
Per hour.
But now we're looking, giving.
We're looking at giving them a break.
Hundred seventeen hours.
We're looking, yes, we're looking at giving them. And again, you don't have to agree to this. This is something, we're collecting zero dollars. That's what we're getting right now. As of today, we have zero dollars rented for the summer. You still have to pay your full-time.
Those employees are gonna be there one way or the other.
Employees. Yes, you, they have to pay them.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to think.
So right now, I'm trying to.
The next hockey league comes in, and they wanna rent for five weeks, and the space available during, could be two days a week instead of four. We need to have something in place to accommodate them as well, correct? Because it's outside of the scope of two hundred and twenty dollars an hour.
Right. So then they would come to me again, and I would come to you again, and you would vote yes or no.
But shouldn't we have something in place that just, they fit into a pigeonhole? You know, they're gonna go here, 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 or here, instead of revisiting this every time and making it up as we go.
Again, this is a unique situation. You know, we talk about.
You close the ice rink down, Ernie, it's no more a unique situation.
Well, thank you. We talk about running this civic center as a business. And I agree, this is a situation where as a business, it's an entrepreneurial decision. This, this group wants to come in, give us twenty-four thousand dollars a year for the summer rental. And they want a little bit more ice time during the regular season at the regular rate, correct? Is that correct? So again, this is like, as a business person, wouldn't you say, we're gonna have this expense anyway? So why not generate some additional revenue? Because they're gonna be there anyway. Unless, as, as Councilman Boudou said, at a certain date, we just close it?
That's why we have to get the numbers.
And then we, and then we play off people.
How much did it cost you to put the ice in there this time?
We have to figure commissions?
Wait a minute, hold on, Angelo, hold on one second. How much did it cost to put the ice in right now?
The cost of the paint and the cost of an employee.
This time around?
It cost, I believe the paint was under fifteen hundred dollars and the cost of pretty much a single employee.
But then you also had to pay for the labor to put that paint down.
Yes, that was, that one single employee.
So they, they painted the symbols and all the companies and everything else?
The logos?
Yeah.
No, the logos were purchased by sponsorships. Those were purchased by them. I did all the logos. I did all the drawings for it.
So rate data is an expense of a couple of thousand dollars to, to remake the ice if we shut it down for the summer? Okay, so if you can at least get all this for the council for the next meeting, the cost to make the ice, the cost to take the ice out, the cost per hour for electricity, whatever it is, kilowatts per hour, and an hourly employee, that's pretty much your expense.
Commission.
And a, do you get a commission on that?
Daily operation?
I don't get a commission from putting the ice in.
Anything, anything that's an expense.
Excuse me?
I don't get a commission for putting the ice in.
No, for, for this?
For this, right here? I don't get a commission for this. This is a current.
So put that in there, zero commission.
Renter. And again, when we explained about my commission, it was the first year that they come in, they come, they're, they're a renter.
So put that in there.
I'm a town resident. I'm not gonna keep taking all that.
So Laurie, Laurie, put that in there, zero commission, put it all in writing. That way they have the council has it and they can.
We knows what, we know what it costs us on a daily basis, how much money we're spending up that rink.
Okay. So from my understanding from Kristen, in the last fiscal budget, the civic center is in the black. The first time in twenty-eight years. So I think whatever we're doing, we're doing right. And this is without this twenty-four thousand dollars.
Laurie, Laurie, I'm not gonna go there with you. How do we know we're in the black? If we don't know what our expenses, nobody can answer me what the expenses per, per hour to run that.
All right, I will find out per hour what the expenses are. I will sit down with Kristen, and I will make sure.
How much it costs us and how much we're bringing in? Then there's no guessing. We all know.
I will do a detail with Kristen and have all that information before the next council meeting. I will email it to all of you so that you have it in front of you, so that you can all see it.
Any other questions for Laurie?
So are we gonna have something in place for another hockey group comes in that wants a similar deal? Or we gonna do this case-by-case basis?
It's something that they can discuss and bring it back to us.
All right.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you.
Prism Remote Lights, sponsored by Councilwoman Messier.
So when I, I was on the other side of this, the table, two years ago, when you got the Prism lights in, and I remember specifically hearing that once the Prism lights were installed, we would be able to remotely dim them, turn them brighter, depending on different events. And here we are, two years later, and we don't have that capability. I'm just wondering, like, what happened with that? Why we're not able to do that yet? Right, originally, when we got Prism, they said you were gonna be able to dim the lights remotely, correct?
Correct.
And I wonder why, or how, how far in advance we are. I know me and Ernie did have this discussion a bit, and me and Joe Argenti had it as well.
I thought it was, I thought that they could dim them anytime they wanted, because I called it on a few.
They can dim them manually right now, but they have to go out to each pole. They have to go out to the pole and do it and go up there. They can't. Originally, we were told from their computers, they were gonna be able to, hey, listen, Robinson Way, it's too bright for my neighbor. Boom, we can dim it. And it's not able to happen right now.
You know, when I was appointed, I had a discussion about Prism and the, the second phase, you know, to this program. And as I recall, there was a problem with a certain section of town, as far as putting the equipment up. And quite frankly, at that point, it just really didn't become a priority with all the other issues going on.
And I know this is obviously prior to your time, I know that, but.
So what needs to be installed on each light is a Wi-Fi device on top of each light so they can talk to each other throughout the community? And you're saying there's an area that's having an issue or whatever?
That was my understanding when I had the original briefing and discussion about this.
And it has to be all done at once? It can't be like, portion of the town is remote and then you do it as you go along?
Wherever, wherever you run your network from. So for instance, if it's gonna be down DPW, or if it's gonna be here, that's gonna be the question, because at that point, that's where you start your network from. You're obviously not gonna start on Green Bush Road if your network's here, because they're not gonna be able to talk to each other. You have to stop from here and work your way out. Or DPW, work your way out, so the lights all talk to each other. So they would have to put together a plan to install those Wi-Fi devices on each one.
But originally, they did, I mean, I don't ima, I didn't imagine that conversation, right?
We, we brought that up, actually, when we had our last discussion with Ernie, with Prism, with not even getting the lights back up, because National Grid was changing all the poles out and dropping the lights on the ground.
That was a separate, yeah.
And so they had to get all the lights back up for us, and now they're just getting caught up with the lights working, making sure they're back up. I think National Grid changed two hundred and forty poles here in town. Those are two hundred and forty lights that were dropped, that weren't part of their contract, that were dropped to the ground, and they had to come back out and install them. So, Ernie, if you could just schedule a meeting with Prism and find out what's going on with the end result there.
Thank you, Ernie.
Bulk trash.
Any questions on that? Thank you.
Bulk trash pickup ordinances, sponsored by Councilman Messier.
So this, I wanna bring this up to the council. When we brought the bulk pickup back to the town, as opposed to having Mega do it, one of the reasons that I thought it was an advantage was if we have an instance where there's a mattress or a couch left out, that we can just call DPW and have it removed. But I know that, you know, by doing that, we also eliminate the ability to find them. We had an instance a couple of weeks ago, right on West Warwick Avenue, where there were some mattresses, and I had them removed, and they ended up being infested with bedbugs, which, all the more reason to get them off, off the corner. But, you know, then we ended up having to pay a seventy, seventy-five dollars to dispose of them. So I'm just wondering what the council's opinion is as far as, in those situations, should we leave it out there so it gets tagged, so we can make money, or should we just get rid of it? And is there a way we can increase the time that we can find somebody for leaving it out there?
I was on my way to play golf, and I got a call from Nicole this morning, and she sent me an email that I hadn't read, but I was gonna get on. Here she is.
It's, it's trying to, it's, to me, it's trying to find that balance of not letting people just throw stuff out there, but also not just leaving trash on the side of the road. And there's probably some, some balance.
And I get it. And they are, and we've talked about this. Well, I wanted, I wanted some current information, because there is a difference between minimum housing, where it's within your property, and, you know, and I think I was saying, they've got certain state ordinances that for paint, it's thirty-one days. For this, it's fourteen days. For this, it's ten days. However, once it's curbside, what is the actual timeframe that is due process? So this is what happened. Ninety-one West Warwick Avenue had debris all over it. Notice, I didn't even bother with the tag. I just went right to the notice of violation to the new owner to request the pickup within, because it was a mattress for tagging, and combination debris, I called it, five days, five days to handle it. So while that was sitting on my desk, because what happens is come that fifth day, if it's still out there, then that's where the fine goes out. Certified mail, they get a fine. And if they don't pay it, or it's gotta be paid and cleaned, and if not, that's when I end up in court. So what happened is you opted to get rid of it. And I understand, it was a total eyesore, where it is on West Warwick Avenue. It's terrible. It was.
I wasn't even here at the time. I was in New York at the time, and I made the call.
It was three contaminated mattresses. Now, we are part of the recycling program in West Warwick.
These are apartment houses, right, Nicole?
Yeah, it used to be Don Elliot's Angelo, which, if it was, I was just gonna go right for the ticket as a, you know, because of his reputation as a, we call it a nuisance property, but unfortunately, he sold that one, so I had to send the letter out. So the thing is, if you have a contaminated mattress, we cannot recycle it. It costs the town now seventy-five dollars. It went up. Used to be fifty bucks. It's now seventy-five dollar per mattress. So the three mattresses were contaminated. That's two.
They're gonna see these dumped all over the town.
Two hundred and twenty-five bucks we ate. And the sad thing is, is the owner called to handle it, and it's already gone. So we did eat it on that one. So then I'm wondering, okay, do we, do we sit and let it sit for five days, and then they don't pick it up? And then I send the ticket, and it's still sitting there. And usually, at that point, though, I will say, Jay, and I'll, I speak with the foreman and the secretary. I'll say, let's pick it up, we'll go to court, and I'll see if I can get it in as a lien of property if they don't pay the fine, or they pay the prop, they pay the invoice for the pickup. So there are things I do. Where I need to know right now is what is the actual timeframe that I have? Can, what is the due process? I, I pick three, five days, depending on what it is, but I don't have an exact ordinance for timeframe on what I can do and how you wanna handle it.
If you don't have an ordinance, that means they don't have an ordinance.
All I, all the ordinance is, I've got everything marked.
Unless, unless Mr. DeFiori's gonna request or advise or suggest an ordinance with a timeframe, if there's nothing prohibiting you.
It just says, it, it's not allowed and regulated by someone, right? You've got that named in the ordinance, and any violations will be according to fee schedule, which is the twenty-five, fifty, one hundred, depending on.
Which means you don't have any time constraints.
Right. So I've, I've been selecting. So i- does that mean, like, overnight, you need to get it done? Can I, I mean, can we do?
My suggestion would be, and I've talked to Al about this, and Ernie and I had a discussion, that this town might need, or all the towns in Rhode Island, might need enabling legislation that allows for these type of fines to be put up against the MLC versus, against the House. So if somebody wants to refinance, or somebody wants to come and get a license or permit, they'd have to pay this money first, instead of waiting ten years. But if there's nothing constraining you from time as to sending out the notice, do it immediately.
So I can send out notice and fine at the same time?
Let's put it to you this way. When they put their stuff out on the street.
Correct.
They're notifying everybody that, hey, I just took my garbage and put it on the street, right? We'll fire it right back at them immediately.
So here it is.
Let them challenge, let them challenge.
In court at that point.
The nonexistence of an ordinance.
So instead of a letter of, take care of this within X amount of days, it will be, you are going to be fined for this violation.
I think it needs to be something that as soon as the town is provided with notice, which means when you put it on the sidewalk, that's notice.
When I see it.
You're gonna get an immediate response. And if we provide that to them via ordinance, they can't complain about they didn't have enough time.
Right. I have everything, like, I've got photos, timestamp, date, everything.
You've got enough evidence. Again, and the town council pushed this forward in the last few months, was the reason being is we didn't, we wanted the streets to get cleaned up faster, not, not sit there for a month. This goes back years on this council, not just the last two years. Councilman Giroux, Councilman Kelsey. Councilman Giroux, Councilman Kelsey, Philomena Augustus, they were all here saying, we need something to, to take a bite and get the streets cleaned up. Because it's happened in a lot of our wards. Angelo, you had it on Prospect Hill.
It's a constant, constant...
Still on Prospect.
Hit 'em, hit 'em with the fines.
Now, the fines set by ordinance right now, 'cause they're very low, the first, it's only twenty-five dollars for a first offense?
That actually was, I think that was adjusted, Al, a few years ago. It used to be like a ten, twenty-five, fifty. We actually pushed it up to twenty-five, fifty, one hundred. So twenty-five the first violation, fifty the second, one hundred. Third, once you reach that over three, you're called a nuisance property. And that's where I didn't have to send a notice at all. But now you're saying I don't even have to, I'm not required to.
If there's nothing preventing you from an immediate response to them putting it onto the sidewalk, do it. Let them challenge it, I don't think they will. However, and I'm gonna abide by what Al has to say, normally, since we are a notice state, we should have an ordinance that indicates that upon the presentation of the so-called garbage, mattresses, whatever, on the public sidewalk, you will be immediately notified of not only a removal, but also a fine.
And can we look at possibly increasing the fines? 'Cause I think twenty-five is really, for those people, especially if they're getting rid of a mattress, three mattresses, it's gonna cost them seventy-five bucks apiece, and they're getting fined twenty-five dollars.
So I will say with discretion...
This guy on Clyde Street, he's taking mattresses for free.
Fourteen Clyde.
He actually charging you.
He's charging you?
He's charging you.
How much are we paying to get rid of a mattress?
Well, if it's non-recyclable only, it's seventy-five dollars. Which I don't think they'll take non-recyclable either.
If they're recyclable, we don't, we don't pay anything.
I believe it's a, it's just, for drop-off, we do demand now, after the bag.
No, no, but I'm saying, on our, on our end, when we bring the, when we get rid of the bins, we're not paying to drop off those bins. I'm sorry, I'm stealing the bins, on the mattresses, sorry.
Right, just the bag.
No, I know, we charge for the bag, so that way, in case it's...
We've learned our lesson.
It'll ruin the whole load, we'll pay, yeah.
Yeah, I will say, I do use discretion. I have my little orange warning, my little tags, my little orange warning tags for bulk pickup, remove from curb. I'll say ninety percent of the time, those people call, they're getting it off. But then there are those that, I, I'm getting a good feel who doesn't, and what, what we need to take care of.
Right, but those chronic properties that seem not to get it, they should be notified prior to somebody leaving something out there, saying that, since you are the owner of the property, you're ultimately responsible for what your tenants are doing. So if you're gonna allow your tenants to put these out, and the town's gonna have to pay to get them either taken care of because of bedbugs or anything else like that, any expense to the town is gonna go directly to you.
And we spoke today, you had, you had, you added a property, I don't think it was that property, where it was an out-of-state landlord, right?
Nineteen Wesley Street, yeah. Which, which is, we're getting an invoice collective for her, and I'll, I'll, yeah, so, okay.
We know where we gotta go with this.
After Nicole called me, I was thinking the same lines Tim has. And in all of these ordinances, I always suggest, it goes back to the property owner, in-state or out-of-state, leans on...
Thank, any question, any more questions on that? I'd like to move Letter O up. We have students here from West Warwick High School, and they do have school tomorrow.
It's not a half-day?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a half-day, but...
I'll make a motion to move O up on the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor of move O up?
Aye.
Proposed, ayes have it. Mary Ann, can you read it?
Tobacco dealer B, sponsored by Councilman Padula.
There's nothing to move, right?
Oh, there's...
All right, I received a few calls... I make a motion to move the resolution, whatever you wanna call it. There's nothing on paper.
Yeah, it's right here, it's Fee Tobacco.
Is it, it's not a resolution?
No, it's in there as a resolution.
All right, I'll move the resolution.
A second. Discussion?
Yeah, I received a couple of calls from businesses, and he was here last week, and there wasn't a meeting. But Midville Country Club, I guess he sent a letter to the council, and I never received it.
No, he sent the letter to the clerk, very...
To give to the council, I haven't seen it.
It wasn't, it wasn't for the council, it wasn't addressed to the council, it was addressed to the clerk, and calling names, so...
It's all the papers that we had sent him, that he wrote all over, scribbled all over, and sent it back to my office, call it.
Well, I wish I had a copy of it. But anyway, these fees, he sells maybe a hundred dollars' worth of cigars a year. I think the fees are a little out of line. It's not gonna stop them from selling, all it's gonna do is, the person who does it more or less for customers, there's no kids that go over there and buy cigars. I went with the ordinance of hiding these jewels, and vapes, and candy light, but I think this fee is another fee that we're putting on the businessman that's selling tobacco. So, I am asking this council to stay in line with the tobacco fee as it was as of last year, and not raise it, it went from, what, Al? One-twenty-five?
It was originally, I believe, a hundred, and we moved it up to three hundred...
Three hundred.
With the month, and view Angelo's comments, the resolution I submitted to you, for your consideration, reduces it to a hundred and twenty, and the only reason I picked a hundred and twenty was because it's divisible by twelve.
I mean, all we're doing to these businesses is putting another tax on them, which, they're, they're, they are taxed to death. And I'll keep repeating myself, it's only a hundred and seventy-five here, another a hundred and seventy-five on electric, another two hundred dollars a year on taxes, on property taxes, another ten dollars a year on tangibles, another fifty dollars a month for heat. So what we're doing here, again, businesses that have been here, and I'm not getting these calls from new, new customers, these, and like he said, what I'll do, I'll close the golf course down, if it keeps going on, and he was pretty well mad, I guess, when he wrote, I haven't seen the thing, and put housing. That's the last thing we need, is more children in our school system, more schools. So, I'm just, again, advocating for the business, and I think it's another tax fee.
So...
And I'm...
Councilman, I understand you brought it up, you brought it up last time.
Yep.
Thirty-one licenses were sent out for renewal, twenty-nine renewed. One said they do no, no longer sell cigarettes, and the golf course is the other one who has not renewed. Now, people who don't even sell cigarette, cigarettes and tobacco products, renew their license at three hundred dollars. Nobody, and, and the students have brought that up, and they can, they can talk about that in a few minutes. Also, there's inspections that are being done, and those inspections have to be funded. And when you're talking thirty businesses, twenty-nine businesses, at seven thousand dollars, seventy-something hundred dollars, to do those inspections, that means the police department has to go out and inspect these, the children who are also on the task force are getting paid to do so, so...
But they're funded.
It's covering those fees. They're not funded, the funding is running out, and I'll let Ms. Main speak about that.
Kimberly Main, forty-one Youngs. The funding is through a grant currently, and this grant was supposed to be, help the towns become self-sufficient, to put in a model policy with high fines, in order for us to be able to continue this without the grant. As of March, there will be no more grant, it's gone. February is the last month of it.
I, I agree with the health aspect of it all. And, and this is kinda where I went, and we talked about this many times. And I, I received one call from a business owner this summer, not even in my ward. He was, he was in your ward, actually, but I took the hit, and he wasn't happy. And he said, you know, we talked about it, he said, I paid it, because what am I gonna do, not pay it? So, he said, but I don't even, I sell cigarette, cigarettes just to have them. So I make a little bit of money off them, I make the money, I'm not gonna say the business, but I make the money off of my specialty. But, what are you guys doing? That's, that's a question, was a question to me, what are you doing as a council? You're, you're pricing this out of West Warwick. And, and I said that in the beginning of this meeting, and I'll probably say it again. I mean, I think we have to think of things a little bit differently. You know, and you're talking about the businesses that have been here for ten, twenty, thirty years, and I, I understand all this, I think it's a great program. For the health aspect.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we all did pass this five to nothing, right?
Yes, yes.
You voted against.
No.
One, four to one.
No, he voted against.
I voted, I voted against the age, I did not vote against the fines.
I voted for this on the health aspect, and, and I agree with that. But when you take in terms, when somebody else comes to you and say, this is how it's affecting me, and my livelihood, you gotta take a step back and put yourself in that position. You know, and just like you said, I mean, three hundred...
I wasn't, I wasn't considering the after effect.
Three hundred here, three hundred here, three hundred there.
Thousands.
It's a lot of money.
I understand all the aspects, what you're talking about, and great job, girls, you guys do a hell of a job doing it. I appreciate it, but, what are we gonna do next? Alcohol?
We do alcohol.
It's already done.
What's our, what's our...
Raise their fees from five hundred a year to a thousand? Somebody's lactosis, they don't want milk, we're gonna raise that? I mean, somebody's allergic to peanuts, peanuts gonna go on a back shelf? Or another fifty-dollar fine for, for peanuts? I mean...
I, I personally think...
You can argue all you want, I hear the good points, but I hear the businesses cross...
Well, I heard, I heard a businessman come up here last council meeting, and I think he hit the nail on the head. It's a business decision. If you wanna sell them, you sell them, if you don't wanna sell them, don't sell them.
That's a hell of a way to put it.
And if you wanna sell them at cost, then, then you just simply raise the fee enough in order to...
I disagree, I wanna keep the businesses here, and all I'm doing is acting on a constituent, and...
One out of thirty.
I'm bringing it, well, then you vote the way you want. You can tell the businesses that, as you go around door-to-door. I'm saying, I am not for the three hundred dollar fee, I am for a hundred and twenty dollar fee, and that's my opinion, one vote, one opinion, and I speak for my constituents in my ward. So, you can vote four to one, I'm voting against this three hundred dollar fee. I brought it up, I told my constituents I would bring it up, and that's my line on it. I'm not voting for a three hundred dollar fee.
My understanding is that very little money is made on tobacco. Is, is it, is it a leader product, is that why they need to keep it in the stores?
No, I think there's a lot of money made on tobacco.
These independent stores, like, the Cumberland Farms?
There's plenty of money made on jewels.
Whole lot of money made on tobacco, and not only that, the tobacco companies pay businesses for...
So they could have fought three hundred dollars?
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
Except for maybe a smaller business on the...
Who's selling them at cost, which isn't a good business decision in the first place. He's doing them at cost, so he just simply raises the fee, he sells...
I don't mean to interrupt, but how much is the funding for the inspections? How much are they losing without the grant?
I asked that question, 'cause I don't have last year's financials, and I haven't gotten an answer. But, the kids, each time they go out, will make forty bucks. And then you have two police officers, and you guys probably have a better idea of what a police officer costs per hour. And it's four hours minimum each time, so...
And they do that a few times a year?
Yes.
I mean, it's gotta fund it, and personally, it's a business decision.
Well, going back to the hundred.
I understand one-twenty, it makes sense.
Well, I'm gonna tell you another thing that we're gonna have an issue with. Twenty-nine of them paid, it's been in last year's budget. They've already paid, now you're gonna have to have the clerks refund every single dollar back to every business.
Those will do September first.
They've all paid. Twenty-nine out of thirty-one have already paid out.
That's right, and they will do on September first.
But again, you gotta refund, if you pass this back to one-twenty, you gotta refund it.
This goes into effect for next year.
Again, the clerk, well, I, I heard different from the clerk, so... And again, I, I disagree, I think three hundred...
The, the fee on this, the, they come up annually on September first, so that all the monies that have been paid, have been paid for this September first. From here on in, they're paying for September first of two thousand nineteen. So that, when my, I wouldn't say there's any refunds though.
Al, what is, what are the other cities, like, surrounding cities and towns charging?
I don't know.
I mean...
I don't even know whether there are any.
I mean, they're, they're somewhat arbitrary numbers, you know, like, we had three hundred, which we all agreed to, and then we, we did go back and forth, talking about lowering it, and then we somehow dropped it quite a bit to one-twenty, which was just an arbitrary number that you pulled out.
Angelo suggested a hundred.
I'd suggest a hundred.
And I went to the one-twenty, as I said, because we have the situation where people come in in the, come in in June, and they've gotta pay for June, July, August, and I, I, I'm not good at math, so I said...
So, if there's no money in tobacco, let me just ask you something. How do they settle a lawsuit for multi-trillion dollars?
That's a tobacco company.
But again, Angelo, you're telling me there's no money in tobacco.
David, you vote any way you want.
Wait a minute, Angelo, I was in a retail store from fifteen to twenty-five years old. From twenty to twenty-five, I managed, I had options to look at the mockups and everything else. I can't tell you on jewels, 'cause that wasn't there when I was there, but I could tell you, E-Sig on Route Two, they'll tell you what his markup is, it's forty to fifty percent on each one of those jewels and everything else. Then, you look at cigarettes themselves, I can guarantee it's ten percent, if not more, markup.
It is, that's why they're a business to be profitable. That's what, that's what pays the salaries.
But you know what, it's, we're not talking about...
Listen, it's another tax, you're pit-pocketing the businesses. And that's exactly what they're doing up here, is pit-pocketing every business in this town of West Warwick.
And we as taxpayers...
Call it anything you want, it's pit-pocketing.
And we, as taxpayers, every one of us here in Rhode Island, pay six hundred and forty million dollars due to tobacco-related illnesses, just in Rhode Island.
You know what I wish? I wish they would stop selling cigarettes, because you know what would happen? The state would go bankrupt. Because thank God that people have that addiction, and it's a shame to say that they're smoking, because we wouldn't have any jobs in this state if they quit smoking. Figure it out, do your homework, I know you're capable of doing it. How much tax money goes to the state of Rhode Island for cigarette smoking?
If smoking wasn't around, Angelo, my father might make it past sixty-five, but you know what? It's probably not going to.
It's not going nowhere. I quit, so I don't care.
But C V S stopped selling, and they're doing great.
They're doing great, because they're a multi-billion dollar corporation.
Alan Plaza fired Robin Lane, and with regard to tobacco, and you talked about the settlement, the state of Rhode Island got billions of dollars, okay? And it was plugged straight into the general fund. It was supposed to have been used for smoking mitigation, to stop the kids, for educational programs. The grant probably would go on for my great-great-great-grandson, but that money was wasted. And if we wanna stop something, how about stopping crack, okay? Because you can pass an ordinance on that, but I'll guarantee you, these kids could go out there and buy it, no problem. I see the vapes in the school, that's our number-one problem in the school.
If it was vapes instead of hash oil, it'd be okay. But they're putting hash oil in it right up the street, right here. But I end my case, I know what I had to do.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Angelo?
What are we voting?
You're voting on one-twenty.
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
John?
No.
Jay?
No.
And I vote no.
Taxpayers, delinquent businesses, sponsored by Councilman Padula.
What is this?
Thank you, girls.
Happy birthday, David.
Thank you. Oh, yes, here's another thing.
Have a good night.
I put this on the agenda, there's a few businesses that fall behind in their taxes. And myself and Councilman Giroux were against this from day one. We always set our little pros and cons about, I hope everybody stops smoking, 'cause there wouldn't be any funding at all for anything, and we could really do a really good job. But anyway, another disappointment here, what we're doing, what the businesses are telling you, and it's not the first one that went on a payment plan, it's not the second one, it's not the third one, there was seven or eight different ones, and these are successful businesses that have been in town for over fifty years, that are telling us they can't afford to pay what we're charging them anymore. They can't afford what they're paying now. So we keep putting these fees on top of fees, and like I say, the majority of this council is pit-pocketing the businesses, the majority. You can decide who. And being an election year, I'm gonna keep advocating on that deal, and I'm gonna go door-to-door and say exactly what's on my mind, because I'm not ashamed to say what I feel, what, when I feel it, and how I feel it. These businesses, these businesses can't afford to pay the taxes, so what we're doing is taking them out of commission, that work for towns, work for this town, and we're stopping doing business with them. They can't pay now, so once we stop their funding, and their businesses from, and I'm gonna use one for an example, a towing company, because it's gonna come out anyway, a construction company, a manufacturing company, three in particular, two are in my ward. We penalize them, and we can't do business with them, because they owe taxes. Now they have no other way of paying their taxes. If they fall that far behind, then the town has the power to auction off their properties, which they can do at any time. Rose can only do so much, she goes by our ordinances, and a lot of people are taking it out on Rose and yelling at Rose, and she only follows orders what we pass up here. Rose has nothing to do with this, she has to follow orders. So the businesses are coming to me, Angelo, I can't pay now, because from fourteenth highest in the state to third highest, it's gonna tell us something, that we're charging too much taxes in town for people to do business. What we talked about with these, uh, special deals for tax incentives and all this other stuff, and what we're doing to the businesses that have been here, is kicking them in the ass in plain English, and saying, "Step aside, if you can't do it, we'll sell your property." So, what I wanna do is bring a motion to change this ordinance. Two, we're gonna get paid one way or the other, whether it's down the street, a month from now, a year from now, but we're stopping the funding that they're doing in their businesses, that this town cannot do business with people who are hitting it tough. That's, that's a really good example, again. So, my suggestion is, they have to pay their taxes, they're gonna pay their taxes, but give them a break and let them still continue the services that they're doing for the town and get paid to do it.
So, so let me give a little history of this ordinance. This ordinance came forward about five years ago...
Six, to be exact.
Okay, six, to be exact. That there was a tree company doing work for the town.
Out of town. But he owned property in town.
He owed fifty-seven thousand dollars in taxes.
Yep.
And we were paying him tens of thousands of dollars in tree work. But yet he wasn't paying his taxes. So, at that time, we said, anybody doing business with the town, at that point, we moved the ordinance forward saying, "If we're gonna hire you, one of two things gonna happen. It's gonna be taking care of your taxes, or we, we can't do business with you unless you're up current on your taxes." Now with that being said, that issue was resolved immediately, actually. And Rose and John Semino before her didn't come before this council and get payment plans. They set up their payment plans with these businesses on their own. Now, as far as I know, there's only been one business removed from any list in town to do business with right now. Maybe I'm wrong, but I only know of one. Okay? And they were on a payment plan. And that payment plan, by no means I had no control over it, you have no control over it. That payment plan was settled not once, renegotiated again, and talked about again, set up to another payment plan, to, I think there was three different payment plans that were taking place over three years. Now, again, I don't know the full details, but at that point, Ernie said that he had to take somebody off the list of doing business with the town.
Yep, because he's gonna buy our ordinance, which, which they should be doing.
Well, again, Angelo, I, I think it's only affecting one business, and correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it's not. Because what we did, you just said, we settled our problem. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rose, if they don't, if I don't pay my taxes on my business, and you, the town does no more business with me, which they don't anyway, never did. I only donated to them for all these years, but they go out of town to buy auto parts, by the way. So anyway, if I do not pay my, my taxes on my salvage yard, what option do you have to get your money, to get the town's money?
If it's tangible, or if it's real...
Property taxes, altogether, everything. Sewer, tangibles?
Yeah, sewer.
Goes to tax sale, right?
Yeah, real estate goes...
Do we get our money?
When it goes to tax sale. But the tangible is, it usually goes to a debt collection.
We have tangibles that businesses didn't pay or continue to do business in this town. They move from one building to another, they say that they can't find them. And you know who I'm talking about, they move from one, one end of town to the other end of town, owing tens of thousands of dollars and still continue to do business for the town of West Warwick. And that has nothing to do with you?
No, I, we have a debt collection company for that.
Right.
That we try to collect on.
Uncollectible was on the last time. Uncollectible. I don't know why, they moved a mile and a half away, so it's uncollectible.
So, Rose, who sets the payment plan?
The tax collector. This, this ordinance is banned.
Hold on, so when a, a business or a resident has a problem and trying to avoid tax sale, they don't come before this council whatsoever, they go to you?
That's correct.
You sit down, you discuss, what, a payment plan?
That's correct.
And they have to follow that payment plan?
And if they do not adhere, then...
Then what happens from there?
They cannot go on a payment plan for five years, and they will be subject to tax sale.
And if tax sale, what happens?
It gets sold at tax sale, they have a...
We get our money, but then that person now owes somebody else ten percent.
That's correct, and they'll have a year to redeem.
And then there's a lien, and one year to pay it, and if it's not paid, that person now owns the property.
Well, they can go to...
They can take over the property.
That's right.
So that's, you know...
Yeah, they have to go...
So don't, I just don't, I want everybody to be clear up here. Rose has worked with businesses on a monthly basis, a yearly basis, to collect.
Us, as a governing body, businesses are telling you they can't afford to do business here. After fifty years, all of a sudden, they're paying two hundred thousand dollars a year on taxes. They can't afford it anymore, and we're kicking them to the curb and saying, "You know what? You can't pay the taxes, even though we can foreclose on your property, but we're not even gonna give you one red cent. We're gonna give it to somebody out of town or somebody else." Listen, I know how this is going.
Angelo, when I heard about this, I asked the town manager, said, "Are you sure about this? Is there, is there something we can do? Is there something Rose can work with the business owner?"
Listen, yeah, very easy. We can work with the business owner. Put him back on the payroll. Let him pay his taxes, because if he don't, we're getting it anyway. But what we're doing, we're crippling him faster, because he can't make any money. You got one person in town that pays two hun- had to come to your place, Rose, and not mentioning the business name, pays about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars every year on taxes. Couldn't get a permit to put up a building to make that two hundred and eighty thousand. Had to go out and borrow the money at twenty-two percent or twenty-one percent to pay his taxes, and still behind in taxes, because he can't keep up. You know, my words to him is, donate all your property to the church, don't pay any taxes at all, and move it to Warwick. That's how it's getting.
Can I ask, how, how much they were behind, or were they off the payment plan at that point for, for us to get to this point? I don't, for this specific...
They did not adhere to the payment agreement.
At all?
The, the, the one we're talking about right now, I really don't know if we should really be talking about this right now.
No, I'm not talking about an individual.
No.
Yeah.
They couldn't keep up the payments, certain individuals that I talked to. They couldn't, and they did anything they could to try and make money with the town, and they signed their life away, which I would have never even signed.
But this ordinance has been in effect since two thousand one.
Yeah, we just, actually, that's way even before my time, but we, we, we modified the ordinance in two thousand ten.
I think you tried, but then, didn't it go back to the old way? Because something was done not consti- unconstitutional at the time?
I'm not sure about that.
Oh, I remember that conversation. But it, it's the same, it's in there, I have, I mean, I can make everyone a copy of...
No, I, I know the ordinance very well. It's, it's, and again, it's, it's not like, and I wanna make it clear, it's not like the town doesn't try to work or negotiate. And, and again, it's up to you, the manager and the tax collector, to sit down with these businesses. And if you can get on a payment plan and get them on the payment plan, that's fine. But again, if they're not gonna adhere to the payment plan, then what do you do at that point? You just, it's, it's...
Sell their properties.
But, but Angelo, I, I understand what you're saying, but...
Don't, don't, don't stop giving them money for doing business with the town.
But Angelo, at what point are they delinquent and not supposed to be doing work for the town?
Why is someone delinquent on taxes, David? Why?
I, I don't know what the person...
Because maybe taxes are too high? Maybe because we're not helping the businesses out enough? Like we're helping these new businesses coming in? Perfect example.
How many delinquent businesses do you have right now?
I have four businesses that, well...
How many businesses in the community?
We have what, over six hundred?
And there's four on a payment plan.
Eight hundred?
Eight hundred.
You're catering to four individuals. I mean, if it was forty, would it make a difference? I'm saying, Angelo, you're gonna cater to four individuals on, who are on payment plans.
I wanna cater to anyone who's not making it that we can help make. Because he's been paying taxes, she's been paying taxes for fifty, sixty years in this town. And they can't afford to do business anymore in town. It's pretty sad. Pretty sad.
Angelo, I'm not arguing that. I, I'm saying to the point of, this town, but Angelo, you made it... Angelo, I just wanna bring it forward that you made it sound like we don't try to work with these individuals. These two, Rose has worked with these individuals, and they continue to try.
There's a number of reasons why businesses fail. I mean, it can't be just blamed on the town. There's a number of reasons. It could, it could be, uh, you know, geographic, that they're not located in the right place, or maybe they're just not equipped to run a business. I mean, there's, there's a multitude of reasons.
I know, fifty years, they've been doing it because they're not well qualified to run a business.
Well, I think we're talking in generalities, not just one specific business.
But we can give a stabilization to a new person coming into town.
Coming in that knows nothing about, that don't even live in this town. And will go spend his money in another town. Thanks, Rose.
Now, the next question. I don't think you have to change the ordinance. I think if, if Rose and the manager feel that they can work with that individual, or individuals, then sit down with them and discuss it.
This is an ordinance that we have for them not to give any work to certain businesses if they're not caught up on their taxes. It has nothing to do with Rose or the town.
But Angelo, they, let me, let me say something here. The individuals you are talking about were on a payment plan. They were paying something, and they were still doing work for the town. They decided to stop paying their taxes for whatever reason, personal, whatever it may be. I don't know, I don't, I'm not part of the family, I don't know anything individually, okay? Why they stopped paying, I can't answer that. Maybe Rose can answer that with them individually downstairs, okay? And work that back out. But they've been on, as long as they were on the payment plan and paying their bill, they were doing work for the town. It's when they stopped paying, is when the manager had to stop with Rose and stop them from doing work for the town to get them back in here and possibly get it squared away. And it hasn't gotten squared away.
How much money do you get from four businesses that hasn't done business with the town? Compared to when they were doing business with the town, Rose, without mentioning any names? You were getting something, weren't you? Uh, well, I'm not mentioning any particular names, they already know who, they, well, they think, they know who I'm talking about, which probably right one out of three.
Well, I have them right here, I mean, I gotta add them up, I don't, I mean, on a monthly basis, what I'm getting from each business?
You were getting, you were getting monies from them, unless we stopped doing business with them. How much did you get recently? Very little.
I haven't gotten, oh, well, actually...
Okay. I end my, I end my argument.
How long were they not paying before they were taken off?
Okay, I have that information at my, in my bag.
That's, that's all I wanna know is, how long? 'Cause I don't know. I can't get an answer to that.
All right, so nine accounts total, six were on a payment plan. Three were not included because they were, and because at the time when we revised the payment agreement, they were current. Three of those accounts were current. They've had, had three payment agreements since the year two thousand fourteen. And, so this is like their third one. And, let's see. Last payment was made was five one, two thousand eighteen. And they're supposed to be paying weekly. So...
Have, have you met with these individuals?
Oh, yes, we have, we have. And, uh, we had a meeting with Ernie and this individual.
Uh, and as was said...
And Sal, too.
You know, the, uh, the, uh, business as well as individuals can, you know, uh, enter into a payment agreement voluntarily. This company did. And for whatever reason, it stopped making the payments. Under the agreement which was signed, which is very clearly identified, if you fail to meet terms and agreements, therefore, you are not eligible for any further agreements for five years. So the agreement was null and void at that time. Then it becomes a question of if a business, uh, has a contract or does business with the town, the ordinance says they cannot. I mean, there's no discretion there, so...
We put that on there, just to the front.
Right, that's something that, you know...
It's been, it's been there for a long time.
That's correct, so if you...
So at that point, so at that point, there is no discretion to be made. If the company, business cannot make payments, then when we have our next tax sale, they will be on that, that agreement, that, uh, tax sale.
Tax sale's the worst fallback. It's the worst-case scenario for them.
Correct. It is correct.
It is. It's, it's...
But the town extended, but the town extended, you know, the ability to have a payment agreement to negotiate between two parties. They agreed to that. And for whatever reason, uh, it was not adhered to. Therefore, a license, you know, at that point, when we were reviewing licenses, it came up that, uh, you know, uh, the business, uh, does do business with the town, and the ordinance has to take effect. They were notified, and, uh, we had a meeting and went over this with them, uh, so they understood that. Again, this is the policy of the town, it applies to all businesses, not specifically them. And, uh, to my knowledge, there's only one business that is in this situation. So, again, to change the policy, public policy for one individual, I mean, that's really not the way, you know, you should look at laws, ordinances, or public policy. I understand advocating for individuals, advocating for constituents, and clearly, that, that's a role that any councilman has. But when you look to change ordinances, change laws to apply to groups because of one individual, and that is not good public policy, and then where does it end? Where do we say residential people who are on payment agreements?
Ernie, it's not for, I understand what you're saying, believe me. It's not just one. Everybody's by the skin of their teeth. And all I'm doing is speaking out for the guy who's kicked to the curb, and you kick him again, because he didn't pay his taxes, because he couldn't afford it, and which we have a way of collecting them taxes to begin with. The town's not losing anything, so no matter if it's one or a hundred, I'm sure we're gonna see a lot more if things don't change around here within the next year, believe me. I'm in the business circuit. There's forty-two businesses down on my street, and each and every one of them are this close from closing the doors.
And, you know...
Each and every one of them. Not only one that's really stable.
And, you know, a counterargument would be, what about all the businesses that do pay their taxes, that are current? What message is sent to them when we look at changing the regulations for the benefit of one person? So what is that message?
Whether, like I said, one person or a thousand people, we're here to help, not to hurt.
Did I answer your question?
We're not judge, jury, and executioner here. We're here, like the church was here, to say they'd be losing so much money if we charged them. We all, all know. They would be, and we did it for what? To individuals? There was only one parish that was here complaining that we would cripple them. We all gave them that, and I did myself, just like I'm advocating for this business, or three businesses, or three hundred businesses. So, you kick one to the curb, and you bring the other one above. We're here, I'm here, on this council, to help the citizens of this town and businesses. I don't go in to work on a Monday and Friday, I get a paycheck, whether I work three hours or forty hours. I have to go and work every day for my paycheck. If I don't go in, I don't get paid. And when I can't make enough money to pay my bills, we're losing them. And like I said, being involved with the Auto Records Association, with the hundred and nine salvage yards in this state, I don't care what happens in the state, I can't control it, but I can control what happens at this test. Supposedly, I can. With one more vote, I can control it all. But it's always that one vote short. One vote short, people. I rest my case.
At this point, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Thank you, Councilman. Rose?
Yes.
You have a question?
No, I said, did I answer your question?
Oh, okay, I thought you said, can I ask a question?
No.
Yeah, you answered my question, and again, one last que- I mean, you met with the individual. Is there anything that you lawfully can do to help those individuals? If not...
I've tried, like, three, I've given them three times.
I don't know what to do then, from there. Alan?
Alan Palazzo, Five Robin Lane, West Warwick. And please bear with me, because this is rather gonna be a circuitous route to where I'm going with regard to the taxes. I frequent a lot of businesses in this town, and a lot of them are small businesses. They are there not because they're making a lot of money, because they probably could make a lot of money just closing shop and selling their property, but they're here because they provide jobs for the residents of this town. And I can cite a lot of examples where the people of this town, and not white-collar workers, blue-collar workers that are our neighbors, are employed by these businesses. But I have a couple of questions for you along the same lines, because we keep falling back on an ordinance, and this is the requirement of the law, okay? Town Charter, Article 509, requires that the town maintain a cash reserve fund of five percent of the operating budget. So what is that current amount? Can anybody tell me?
Five percent off the top. Mr. Banks, do you have that? I really don't have it off the top now.
What is the five percent, and what is the actual number?
Well, again, it would be, I think, maybe four point eight million dollars, but again, this is way off topic.
No, no, no. It's the same line. Ordinance, Town Charter. I believe the Town Charter supersedes everything. The solicitors can correct me if I want.
Alan, I want to just correct you here, because we're talking about delinquent taxpayer and...
And I'm talking about a requirement to maintain five percent of the operating budget. By the Town Charter that you are responsible to maintain. Excuse me?
Instead of maybe if we have all our delinquent taxes, maybe we can cover some of that.
Oh, well, let me continue then.
How much delinquent taxes do we have in this town, Rose?
Right now?
Right now. How much delinquent taxes? Four hundred and fifty something thousand?
No.
I would have to run a report, Angelo.
Can you get that report for us tomorrow?
I can, but it's not gonna be accurate until we finish our tax collection. That's...
But just, just the basics. He's saying four and a half million dollars. What's the current status of the, of the cash reserve fund now?
Two hundred thousand change.
It's low. We brought that up...
Two hundred thousand, okay.
Two hundred and seventeen...
So we're not, we're not maintaining our own charter. You're not, which is your sworn duty to uphold. But we're gonna crucify the businesses in this town because they're having difficulty meeting it. You're saying you're not getting the tax, hold on, let me finish. You're saying you're not getting the taxes, and that's why you can't replenish the cash reserve, which was, I believe, at that much.
If it wasn't for people not paying their taxes, we would lose over five hundred thousand dollars a year.
But, but my...
I agree with you. Alan, let me just clarify something. As we said earlier, we're not trying to crucify anybody. We're trying, they tried to work with the individual. Now, or individuals. I don't know how many businesses...
The taxpayers of this town, David, are trying to work with you guys. And you have a charter that says you need four point five million. Angelo's saying two hundred thousand. The manager hasn't answered the question for me.
Alan, Alan, going back to two thousand... Alan, going back to two thousand and six, okay?
I was here.
You, oh, you were here. You were talking about the pension way back...
Exactly.
Right?
Ninety-eight percent funded.
Okay, great. We were paying one million dollars into the pension fund at the time. You stood up here and you said, you've got to correct that. You've got to correct it. People before me...
Oh, I agree a hundred percent.
Here we are, wait a minute, Alan. Here we are now putting close to ten million dollars a year into our pension, okay? Almost ten million dollars, one-third of our municipal budget. Municipal budget's thirty-five million. We're paying ten... So twenty-eight percent of our...
I raised a red flag.
Okay? But again, we have improved in some places and declined in others. And we have to, we have to move forward and get that back, built back up within the next few years. We honestly do. But again, we took a step back in our, and the manager has all the numbers as far as where that money went, as far as, because I asked him to get all that and make sure that he can supply that information. Our finance director's been out of work unfortunately in the hospital the past week, so we haven't had a chance to get everything solidified. Again, we're working on that. We're gonna continue working on it. But this is delinquent taxpayers. This has nothing to do with...
And you're delinquent with regard to the cash reserve. You're at five percent of the requirement. That's one. The pension is where it is because every year, your auditors provide the ARC, and the councils didn't meet it. Then, about eight years ago, I brought up the issue of OPEB. What is the ARC for OPEB for this fiscal year?
There is no... Mr. Banks, you want to answer that one because you made that clear.
This is a rough topic at this point.
No, no, this is getting to the taxes. You're crucifying the taxpayers of this town, and you're not doing your duty that you're sworn to uphold.
Multiple opportunities for repayment.
And you've had multiple opportunities to get this town back on track. I, I mean, this is where I'm going. My point with the, with the OPEB, what was the recommended, the auditor's recommended contribution to the employees of this town to cover them post-employment benefits?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
Over a million dollars.
Okay, over, over a million dollars. And how much did we actually contribute?
Five hundred.
So we have that. So let's see. We have businessmen trying to accommodate the town and pay their taxes due to an ordinance, and we're looking at taking their property. But we have a town council that's failing to carry out its duty in accordance with the Town Charter to maintain the cash reserve fund, to contribute to the employees, and the pension fund is screwed up because no one would listen to me back then, and you're obviously not doing it now. So what is the difference? I mean, how can you guys look at yourselves in the mirror? I can. As you said, I was here back then, and I stood here and was vilified. People laughed at me. But guess what? I was right, and I did it, even though I was denigrated, because I was on the record. You can go back and look at those minutes, listen to those tapes, and I was here, and they were warned. And I'm telling you now, you start shutting down these businesses that provide employment to our taxpayers, you're not gonna get, lose just the taxes for the business. Those people are gonna be out of work. So think about that.
Thank you.
Rick Banks, A Campbell Street. I just have a quick question. I'm sitting here and I'm listening to this, and I'm taking it all in. And to me, this just seems kind of like common sense. I don't know if we can do this. But these are businesses that are paid revenues from the town, and they owe us taxes, correct? That's what we're talking about. Why can't we just take the revenues we pay them, put it towards their tax bill to ensure it's paid?
I'm not even sure what the revenues are, Mr. Banks.
Whatever they are. It doesn't matter the company. It doesn't matter the amount. Whatever we pay from, as a town, why can't we collect those revenues from them, the services that they provide, and apply it to the taxes? Win-win for everybody. The business stays open. They stay under contract with the town.
I don't want to change the ordinance. Is it, is it possible that we could still sit down with an individual? Ladies and gentlemen, I just said, we don't have to change the ordinance because the tax collector has the power to do what they have to do as far as setting up those...
But you as a council have the power to do what you need to do as well.
Can we sit back down with, I mean, can we sit back down with this business or businesses that we all know what we're talking about? Can we sit that back down with these businesses?
I'm talking about business in general. I'm talking about that ordinance in general.
Is it something, so in any business, is it something where...
If they're contracted to do business with the town and we pay them revenue as a town...
Would we still be able to sit down with this business and negotiate?
They could do that anytime, but I don't know why it's...
Can we do that?
But can we do what I'm asking?
So for example, they provide a service, say it's a toffee or whatever.
Correct.
You're saying that goes back to the town.
Mm-hmm. So they, they do the service for the town, X amount of dollars at the end of the week, the month, however it's invoiced, goes to their taxes. Keeps them in business, keeps them going, and you're collecting money on top of the interest on that, because that's not gonna be enough.
I'm not sure if that's...
Well, that's what I'm asking. I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not an attorney.
She can answer that.
I don't know if we can do that.
You have to have your checks and balances, so whenever you do work for the town, they need to get, you know, they need to get provided the check, and it is mailed out through finance. It's not something that we're just gonna, they do, they do work for the town.
But they can pay us back.
We have to give them their check.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying you have to pay them.
Yeah.
But then they would have to pay us back. So, so in other words, if they made a thousand dollars Monday through Friday, you're writing them a check for a thousand dollars to Joe Schmo Toh, okay? Joe Schmo Toh has to give the town of West Warwick a check back for a thousand dollars. But what happens is, I don't know what the interest is, how much they're making, how much they generate. I don't know. So if they're only making two hundred dollars a week from the town, and they're paying eight, twelve percent interest, how are they ever gonna get caught up is beyond me. They'll ne, they'll never survive. They'll never, checks and balances, they'll never survive even what you're helping them. So I'm not sure how, I don't know what the payment structure was. And if you want to send us the payment structure privately via email...
I can send you that.
And then you want to sit down and, and talk with them? That's your business, okay? But we don't negotiate that. That is the tax collector and the town managers.
I don't want you to send it to me, because I'm not talking about one individual.
Okay.
I'm talking about everywhere. You can send it to the other four. Or three, because I think Lichardi recused himself. All, all I got on was, one of businesses down, and they're talking about tow yards or whatever, and it just so happened, maybe it is a tow yard. But I talked about a contractor, and you know who I'm talking about. I talked about a manufacturer. I talked about a few people, and I'm talking about the businesses who cannot afford to pay their taxes anymore. And my point was, instead of kicking them to the curb, let's help them. And it has nothing to do with you, nothing to do with the town manager. It has to do with this town council.
So you'd have to change the ordinance.
And I'll end my story there. That's all I have to say.
Any other comment?
Jay Slachardi, Twenty-six Carlson Circle. I want to make it crystal clear. I'm coming here as a citizen. I recuse myself from the council. Let's cut to the chase. We have a business in town who was struggling for a few years. I'm not getting into personal reasons. It's an acquaintance of mine. We all know that. The taxes were paid. Not as much what could have been paid, what, what was wanted to be paid, but upwards of over fifty thousand dollars was paid last year. Nobody knows that, right? And the, and the checks, and the checks that come in to a business, the town can't keep them. They get sent over to the business, and the business takes the check, deposits it, cashes it, whatever they intend to do, and then gives it back to the town. So that's what's going on.
So Jay, let me ask you a question, because, and again, Rose has the ability to make those decisions. On 5-1 was the last payment. Did anybody from that business come in and sit down with Rose and say...
I'm not, I'm not sure of that.
That we need to discuss this? Why did they wait till August to come about this? Because again, do you know the structure of the payment plan?
Somewhat.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me.
Are we talking thousand dollars a month? Two thousand, three thousand, what?
Rose can give you that information. There's another issue here that I like to discuss, which is actually a part, a part of this, and this is a root to this. And, hang on a second. I know the family met with three professionals who deal with commercial property. And they did a comparison to the property that is having an issue with the taxes, along with about another six properties here in town, all in the commercial industrial zone. And what was found was, the, the property that, I'm just gonna give you an example. Just say the business is, has a ten thousand square foot building on a one-acre piece of property. The building in comparison has a two-acre piece of property on a fifteen thousand square foot building. They're paying half the amount of taxes. So there's something going on that's wrong here. Could be a mistake. I have no idea. But this was brought to the tax assessor. And within thirty seconds, it was, nope, everything's right. Not even knowing what the property was. It's red flag number one. Number two, tax assessor went out to the property, walked around, came back, everything's right. It's red flag number two. Third time, papers were brought in, maps were brought in, all this information. Can you, can you tell me, this, it doesn't make sense. Week goes by, property owner calls the tax assessor, asks the question, did you figure out what's going on? Yep, everything's right. Now, I don't have a degree in math. However, if you have a bigger piece of property on a bigger piece of land, you should be paying more taxes than somebody with a lesser piece of property on a lesser piece of land. Am I correct with this? I've been sitting on this for a while. I've had the comparisons. A meeting was held with, I was not part of the meeting. I don't want to be part of the meeting, correct? A meeting was held with the town manager. There's still no answers.
The issue that you brought up, the three red flags, did the owner of the property bring this before the tax board of assessment and review?
There's an appeal in place right now. I don't know what...
For what year?
There's an appeal, appeal got put in place this summer. An appeal got, appeal was filed.
Right.
It's way before me, so I'm gonna tell you, two tax collectors ago.
All right. The issue of that appeal, is it still pending?
The paperwork was lost.
Well, that's not my answer.
That's, that's what I'm telling you. That's what I'm telling you. Because I asked those, so listen, I asked the same questions. So now, this is where we are right now.
Wait, wait, wait. Before you, if it was lost administratively, did the property owner file a lawsuit in the Superior Court as it relates to this tax assessment issue?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Because you know that's his right to do.
We all have rights.
Did he refile?
That's his right to do.
I understand that. If you're not so happy, you appeal it, if you're not happy with the appeal, you go to the court, you sue the town. I get all that. I sit over there. I get all that.
Guys, I want to answer something. First of all, skip suing the town, okay? File the paperwork. And this is, I've had to file an appeal before. If the paperwork's not there, wouldn't you refile the paperwork?
It was too late, he was told.
But, but again, you're talking years ago. You're saying years ago.
I'm saying that, I'm saying that's, that's what I was told.
So that's what I'm asking you to have. So every year...
So now we're here with this situ, now we're here in front of this, with this situation. And I guess the question is, do we want to help the businesses or not? It's, it's a pretty simple question.
Jay, I think I answered that a half hour ago, that Rose can sit down with the business and see if they can resolve this. But again, due diligence on both parts. On 5-1, the company or business stopped paying, but didn't tell anybody, and then, when did you take off the list? So May went by, June went by, July comes by, nobody comes in the town hall. But when they take you off the list, I gotta come in and fight now. Why didn't that get done May first, when you couldn't afford the payment, to come in and say, listen, there's a problem right now. Here's my problem. And, I mean, there's other portions of this that you're not even saying. The town received letters from the banks saying the mortgage is due. I don't want to get into this.
Did you really just say that? Did you really just say that?
Yeah, it's a public document, Mr. Banks.
Thank you.
I'm not personally attacking. Mr. Banks, I'm not attacking anybody. I respect the businessman. I respect the businessman. I don't know what the issue is. I just said a half hour ago to sit down and talk to the individual. Gentlemen, it's a public document. It was addressed to the town of West Warwick. It's actually gonna be on the correspondence, so...
Do I need to repeat my name again?
No, Mr. Palazzo.
Okay, I just have a simple question for the manager. Is the town solicitor's invoices up to date and totally, totally submitted?
No.
No, no, no. We're talking about in arrears. You made a public comment, David, that if he wasn't, he would be held accountable. That's why I'm asking the question.
Is he up to date?
Yes, he is. And he hasn't been paid in six months, Alan. How about that?
Imagine that.
And you went, was, I was supposed to get paid every thirty days. You should be up in arms about that.
I am.
All right.
Enough.
It's just I get paid.
Enough.
Dead, that's right. Sit down. I apologize. I apologize, Mr. Banks.
Not accepted, Mr. Williamson.
That's fine.
Please excuse yourself.
I will excuse myself.
David, I apologize, because as I said, it was gonna be a circuitous route. And I have been here, you're forty-two now. Happy birthday. And I have been here, you're 42 now, happy birthday.
Forty-five, thank you.
Forty-five, oh my God. Anyway, a lot longer, you were probably in your twenties when I first started standing up here. And I've seen the deals that went on in this town, what has happened. I have stood before the zoning board, the tax board of appeals, because the taxes inexplicably rose on my house, simply because of who I was and what my politics were. And I'm not going to stand for anything like that anymore.
Alan, I, listen, we agree, okay? What I'm saying is, Rose could work with this business. I'm just confused by nobody coming in on May 1st and discussing it.
Do we know if there were any extenuating circumstances?
Alan, I can't answer that, these are beyond me.
This is what I'm saying.
The only people that can answer that, the two people in the hallway.
I'm just saying, give people a shot, because the local businesses provide jobs for the local people.
We're still going to give a shot, but that's up to them, not this council. That's all I'm trying to say.
The council is the ultimate decision maker, okay? And I'm just going to leave it at that. As I said before, I can look in the mirror, I've never screwed anybody over.
I can direct the town manager, put them back on the list, it's illegal, based upon the ordinance. Until they get current up to their payment plan or whatever was in order.
Consider it. Illegal, the governor just issued an illegal directive.
I can say consider it. Rose can sit down and meet with them, I don't know what more to say. Okay, well then, I don't know what to tell you.
The issue of the assessment, in my opinion, is something that needs to be investigated. If it takes the Rhode Island State Police to do it.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Director's report, town manager.
All right, this issue was discussed at the July 17th meeting. And the direction was for a monthly report to be given by directors to the council, and a schedule to be worked out. After that meeting, I reached out to Councilman Luchardi to get his thoughts and expectations of what this would look like as being the sponsor to the direction. I also Googled other communities' websites and agendas, looking at, you know, formats or how, how this was done. And there aren't, aren't that many examples of this. Right now, there are 12 departments in the town, not including the school department, library, or senior center. And some departments, like Public Works, have many divisions, highway, recreation, civic center. So clearly, you know, that is, you know, again, a lot of departments that we have. So based upon the discussions I had with, well, the correspondence I had with Councilman Luchardi, and certainly feel free to speak on how he, you know, his perceptions or his beliefs about, you know, what, what should be done in a format. Based upon my interactions with him, some of the research I've done, what I would propose is the following, to get your feedback on. Directors provide a monthly written report to the council, which is a public document, available to the public. And it will be discussing, you know, major, you know, major projects, budget review, as was mentioned, and anything of interest that may be coming up. Basically, it's sort of a, a broad overview of the department activities. And again, these can be refined as we go. What I would propose is that, on a quarterly basis, department comes in and presents it orally. And then the, the other reports are a monthly base, a written report submitted to the council, which is, which will be available for public review. And what I would have is, on that quarterly basis, half of the department heads come first meeting, half come the second meeting of the, of the month of the first quarter. Again, if we had a, departments come in all at one time, if five minutes is going to be over about an hour. And if there's questions, if there's more substantive overviews from departments, it could be here an hour and a half, adding to the agenda. So I'm not sure what's, would really, that would be accomplishing. So based upon the review that I, I've done, my recommendation would be written monthly reports. And we'll have a format that we can treat, you know, if need be. And then on a quarterly basis, department heads will come in and present it orally and answer any questions. So that would be my thoughts as to moving forward. Jason, I don't know if you have any comments or thoughts?
Whatever the majority of the council wants.
Anybody else in the council?
I think, I think that what he proposes sounds good. I think that we need more information on a regular basis.
Anybody else?
Whatever the majority wants.
Jay?
I think it seems like fair compromise.
I think it's a very fair compromise, so. It works for us, Aaron.
All right.
Thank you.
Approval from Manchester Street Island, construction to be included as further work deemed necessary under the roadbound pricing, sponsored by Councilman Luchardi.
All set? This, what I'm proposing here, I'm actually going to table this tonight. We have a new DPW director that I just spoke with today. And we are actually going to go out and look at this, look at the site. I know he has some different ideas. This has been in the works for a year. There is, I'm using CDBG money. Unfortunately, the way it stands is, we had a price last year, that price jumped because it wasn't acted upon. Not by any fault of mine. I was ready to go, I thought it was going to be done by, by August 1st of last year. But can only move forward. So, in all fairness to Dave, our new DPW director, we're going to sit down, we're going to go over it next week, and hopefully we can get this done by, by the fall, so. Thank you.
Just put it down on the next agenda. It's just discussion action, so you can put it on the next agenda.
Second Annual Halloween Spooktacular to be held at the Civic Center on Saturday, October 27th, in the evening, sponsored by Councilman Luchardi.
This year's Second Annual Spooktacular will be held on October 27th, at the high school football field and the Civic Center, begin at 6:00 PM. I am going to take the time, along with my family, to put this all together like we did with the egg hunts for Easter, the summer entertainment series last year, the Halloween party last year, and now this one. There will be an egg hunt outside on the grounds, complete with prizes, a costume contest, and a make your own sundae bar, which is different, a little something new. The steam scouts will be doing a nice display. I don't want to give that away, it's a surprise, but it'll be pretty cool. There'll be a little bit more. Flyers will go out to the schools as soon as I have the time to finish working on them with my family. And I'll give you an update at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Tobacco dealer, oh no. FY19 wage reopener, union?
Yes, this is, as, as the council knows and as the public knows, our five-year contracts with all of our municipal unions, all three, had wage reopeners for FY19. We've recently approved the wage reopeners for the police department, the fire department, and now recommending a wage reopener for the municipal union. Under our agreement with them, tentative agreement, would be the union membership of the municipal union. Council 94 would receive a 1% retroactive increase on July 1st of 2018, and 2% on January 1st, 2019. The estimated cost is $66,000, and funding is contained in the FY19 budget. So this would be basically finishing the three unions for their wage reopeners.
Ernie, I had no part of that negotiation, I don't think anybody from the council did. How did that come about?
That percentage amount?
It was based upon, well, it was based upon different alternatives we had with the funding available that was placed in the budget. We had X amount of dollars in the budget, and this is one of the alternatives that met that objective. So that's how this specific proposal was submitted. And based on a, above another option, this is what the union agreed to and it fit within our budgetary parameters.
It's just, just seems, I've seen some of these negotiations in the past. This one just seems a little odd, with the percentages backwards, however it may be.
Yes, he has to put in, she thanks us.
Again, that's how the bottom line amount would work out towards the end of the year. That fit our budget. Could have been another alternative. But again, that, that, you know, was a choice, on how we structured this. And, and this fit into the structure that we had with the funding available. I believe there were two alternatives, and this is the one they chose.
Okay.
Union chose. I wouldn't say happy with it, but.
Any other comments from the council? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Non-union wage increase?
Yes, this resolution parallels the prior resolution. Again, the non-union employees were, you know, under the same, basically, conditions of, you know, no wage increases for the past four years. With the municipal union receiving the increase, it is fair and appropriate that the non-union people receive the same increase. We have 13 full-time non-union employees in the town. All, the rest of all, the other full-time employees are within one of the three bargaining groups. And then we have two permanent part-time employees. So, again, not many non-union people within the town, and these are mostly the directors. So it seems fair and appropriate to have these individuals receive the same increases that the individuals they work with and in some cases supervise receive. And the estimated cost is a little, a little under, I mean, $18,000 to $19,000. And again, is included in the budget.
Any questions on that? I wasn't here for half of that book. Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Yeah, I'm opposed.
Minutes of the previous meeting, resolved of the minutes of the August 7th, 2018 executive session and August 7th, 2018 town council meeting are hereby accepted.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second to discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Consent agendas, resolved of the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same as hereby.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second to discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All licenses have been approved.
Consent agenda correspondence, resolved of the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same as hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second to discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
National Grid and Verizon, resolved of the town council hereby approves the National Grid and Verizon Newell Street, proposing and relocating joint-owned pole location.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second to discussion?
Ernie, this is a.
Yes.
Do you want me to?
I can.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this issue was brought up at the, I believe it was the March, March 20th council, council meeting, about a business parking lot in Newell Street. And that has been, it was opened and there's been a number of situations or accidents where the pole has been backed into. So at that point, it became a. At that point, it became a, looked at it as a potential public safety issue. You know, our electrical inspector had Narragansett Grid go down there and take a look at the situation and see what, what could be done. You know, I did look at the location myself, and it's a very awkward intersection. And it's hard to tell where the road is and hard to tell where a property line is. So Narragansett, I'm sorry, National Grid did go out and they did a survey and looked at the situation, and believed the pole could be relocated a few feet, a number of feet away from where it is. And that would also, that would solve the problem of this pole being in a location which potentially, I mean, if hit by a car, could be very disruptive. Also, there's a transformer on the pole, which is also something that, you know, certainly if the pole was compromised, you know, could also fall. So it was a situation where we looked at it, spoke to Narragansett, I mean, National Grid, go out, take a look at it, and, you know, they reviewed it and said, yes, it can be moved. So through those discussions, you know, our interactions with National Grid representatives as well as Verizon, they indicated that the pole could be moved. There would be no cost, you know, to the town, you know, for the relocation. And with that, they submitted a pole, a petition for a pole relocation, which was submitted to council for the approval. Now generally, and I don't know this for a fact, but generally, there is a right-of-way going from the middle of the road, so many feet, you know, which would be into a sidewalk. So, again, I'm assuming that Narragansett Electric, because they have submitted the petition, has reviewed this and is in with any appropriate, you know, right-of-way that the town has. So again, that's a little bit of the background, how we got to the place that we are today. It started as a, an issue for the council meeting, it was followed up on, determined that the pole could be moved, it could be moved at no cost to the town. And through that, the process for Narragansett, for National Grid, to relocate is a petition to the town, so that's sort of where we are.
Just one thing, and like the council president said, I should recuse myself, this is for the estate of Anna Pinger. It has nothing to do with me, I'm going to recuse myself from a vote, but I just want to say, this happened six years ago. National Grid put a telephone pole there for years, and there's no easement. He never paid for that to be on private property, National Grid. That was never paid the easement, the town don't have an easement on that, and neither does National Grid. So my only concern is, when National Grid moves that pole on the estate of Anna Pinger, the trust fund, that that does not go on the Pinger property. It stays on the sidewalk like the rest of them do. And to be exact, there was 15 accidents there, the last eight years, the last eight months that I took pictures of every one of them. And this has been going on for over six years, that we've been trying to do it, but it fell by the wayside with a previous town manager. So just a little explanation on what's going on there, it's a hazard. It's, it's on private property illegally to begin with, so I'll recuse myself on that note.
Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Additions and cancellations of taxes, resolved of the attached additions in the amount of $3,348.69, and cancellations in the amount of $3,886.43, presented to the tax assessor for approval of the town council. In accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Warwick Polo Ordinances, is hereby approved. The original list is in the office of the tax assessor.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second to discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Claims, resolved of the town council hereby denies or approves the following claim against the town. Joanne Bates, 89 Lawnsdale Street, Apartment 10, West Warwick, pot hole claim, total $300.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second to discussion? Any public discussion? Again, this was recommended by the DPW director. Again, this was recommended by the DPW director of the town. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Resignation from the pension board, plea, resolved of the town council hereby acknowledges the resignation of Paul Bertrand of the pension board with the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? We just put him on, but guess we don't have time. Hearing none, any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Pointing for the West Warwick Public Library Trustees Board, resolved of the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the West Warwick Public Library of Trustees Board for the town of West Warwick, the term to expire two, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second.
I'll move the name of Naomi Lipsky. I hope I pronounced that right.
Yeah.
There's only one applicant she put in.
She looks very qualified.
Yes, very.
She's a PhD.
Yep, so, is she here tonight? Well, congratulations, I'll bring up her name. Only one name, move the name.
I'll second it.
All in, any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations now.
Reports, town managers' report.
Yes, I have four items. The first item is a, a follow-up to something we did earlier this year. Yeah, after reviewing our fiscal issues, the first part of the fiscal year, the administration and myself, finance director, developed a corrective action plan to ensure that the town would end FY eighteen in the black. There were really two components to that plan. One was to reduce current expenses in our adopted general fund budget. And the second one was to rely upon one-time revenue sources to ensure that, you know, again, the town would end the year not in a deficit position. The budgetary, the budget reductions for the general fund were estimated to be about a million dollars and possibly up to one point seven million dollars for one-time revenues. Based upon the operating results we see so far, it looks like the one-time revenue sources may not be necessary to have a balanced budget. And we'll be able to restore those, or some of those, to the places where we allocated them from, primarily the capital equipment and the police detail fund. When we presented the plan, we looked at the information we had based upon looking at what was the FY seventeen budget? What were the structural issues in seventeen? Were these structural issues carried over to eighteen? And in many cases, they were. So, given that, as you recall, I made a lengthy presentation about the corrective action plan. And I indicated to the council, and the council questioned, is, well, if you don't need it, what would happen? And I said, I would come back to the council with a recommendation on what to do. So, I'm pleased to say, based upon what we see, the reductions that were made on the town side and general fund were enough to have a slight surplus in FY eighteen. And the audit's not completed and we're starting that now, but those are the projections look at and they appear to be pretty sound. So, that would mean in FY seventeen, there was a balanced budget, and FY eighteen, there's a balanced budget. So, as I committed to the council, I'll be making a recommendation at the next meeting on restoring some of these items to their original allocations. You know, we took money from the fire department capital account, that's a portion of the rescue service fees goes into that account. And it is a model for most communities that don't have a, most communities don't have a dedicated fund like that. So, that's gonna be very good news as we replace our equipment in a fire department apparatus, which is very expensive as we all know. And the private detail account for the police department, I think it was seventy-nine thousand dollars there that they rely upon to help buy cruisers. So, those are very positive, so by putting these restrictions in July first with the council and the interim manager, we're very effective. Some of the revenue shortfalls we estimated were spot-on. Some other, some other revenues came in with a better economy, you know, building permit fees were up, some of the economic drivers, recording fees and things were up as the economy improves. So, this is very good news, but, but I would say that it has much to do to get the town back to where it needs to be. But by having two fiscal years in the black after many fiscal years, being in deficit, it is a start to go forward now. And, and as we move forward, there are many challenges ahead, but again, these are very positive steps. So, the recommendation we made to you at the next council meeting, so, again, overall, good news, and the directors worked hard to save money in the budgets. And again, starting out July first rather than at the end of the year was, was a major help. And as we go forward with this, we can identify some of the areas that were potential savings in. So, again, as we move forward, a comment was made about the fund balance, reserve account, whatever term you wanna use. Yes, at one time, it was exceeding, exceeding, you know, five percent. And through the years, the town used it to pay for unbudgeted expenses. Town used it to compensate for revenues that were not coming in, primarily in property taxes and prior year property taxes. And one-time expenditures that were made, you know, for improvements, you know, the money that was loaned to the civic center, where'd that come from? Came from the fund balance. So, combination of all these things led to the fund balance being depleted each and every year. And it was almost like something that was like, so obvious, but yet so not obvious. I know I went back and looked at minutes, trying to see what happened, and I did see there were statements that were going according to the plan even though we're running deficits, which goes against anything that I've always been, been trained and understood in, in budgeting. But again, it is what it is. We do have an idea.
You're talking about accountability.
We do know how it was. Those individuals are no longer with the town. So, as we look at our budgets that we're preparing, based upon the nineteen budget we prepared, I mean, there is no obvious structural deficit or issue there. And again, it did require a significant tax increase. But when we were, looked at eighteen budget, we were maybe a million dollars, we had to add to it just to become even because of how it was prepared before. So, we already started way behind. But I believe that we are in the process now of, again, today, today's different than the way it was done before. When I come to you, I tell you where the funds are, I can show you where the funds are, so you'll never have situations where, you know, we won't have it. You know, the funds are in the budget, I can show you where they're in the budget. So, again, some of the issues that happened before will not occur. They did.
Just this one.
That's what happened. So, now, as we, again, you use the word go forward, I can't go back, all we can do is what we are today, move forward, two balanced budgets in a row is, is significant. And the hope would be, and the intent would be, going thereafter, every budget would be balanced, however, we have to do it, we have to balance them. Then we do have issues coming up, significant issues to deal with, which are going to help, help stabilize or provide a direction we will go in forward. And we spoke about them a number of times. So, again, this is good news, but clearly, we're not, you know, out of the woods. These are very positive steps and to restore fiscal condition, and that's what, one of my main objective is, restore fiscal condition. And the other issue that I want to do is, is, you said, accountability, restore accountability, restore accountability in departmental performance in certain areas that need to be improved. So, those are what we're doing, and I believe that we're in a good direction. Again, lots of things to be resolved going forward, but again, being in a, being in a surplus position without having to go to the outside one-time sources is a big, big plus for us.
Maybe we can use some of that to help some of the businesses and taxpayers, seeing everybody got a raise, why don't we throw a bone to them?
Well.
We do, charge a twelve percent interest.
Well, again, those are all by state statutes that indicate how those are, are to be done. But again, that's going for another discussion. This next issue dovetails into the first one, where this council, upon a recommendation, commissioned a, an organizational study and a business practice review of certain departments, that's going on well. The due date for that completion of that work is September twenty-eighth, and we are on target for that. And I think that's going to be helpful as we look at and assess department performance. I'm sure there are things that are done well, things that can be improved upon, in any department, every department. And if there are some issues or systemic issues that need to be addressed, then it'll be a good map to go forward with those as well, so. I believe that the consultant is doing a very good job from, from my meetings with him. I know he's interviewed just about everyone in, in the affected departments, and I believe he is really going to present what he believes is the proper recommendations, you know, in those areas, so I'm looking forward to that as, as well as we are, all are. And these two are just acknowledgements. One is to Centerville Bank, you know, our, our neighbor. The bank is going through renovations from their branches and their main headquarters. And as a result of these renovations, new office furniture is being purchased. So, Centerville Bank has offered many nonprofits, as well as the town, the ability to go in, look at their furniture that they are no longer gonna be using, to see if we could use it in our departments. And again, this is furniture that is very high-quality furniture, as you would think a bank would have. So, through their invitation, the directors did go, look at their inventory and selected a number of items for the town at no cost to us. You know, very nice desks, chairs, file cabinets, bookshelves. So, again, these are very, very nice pieces of furniture, so I do want, I will send a letter, but I do want to publicly acknowledge the generosity of Centerville Bank for their donation to the town. It's, it's, was very wanted and approved, because again, you know, we, you know, don't have a lot of budgets for replacing, you know, furniture of that nature, so that was a very, very nice gesture of them to, to not only us, but other nonprofits within the town, so it is, it is very nice for our, our local bank to do that, we're appreciative of that. The other item is something that came out of a, a staff meeting, was a question about active shooter training. And the police department has a program for that, that they have developed and they have done in various, I guess, businesses in the town. And the question was, what would happen if something, if that happened in town hall? So, the police department put on a active training seminars for town employees last month, the sixteenth and seventeenth, Thursday and Friday, so we split, so anyone who wanted to go had an interest that could go, was able to. And it was very interesting, 'cause I attended as well, and it did show how the police respond to these issues, which is different from the prior models. And as a result of that, you know, they conducted, you know, just some discussion as well as various activities and incidents, exercises to, to show us what would happen if this situation occurred, so. Lieutenant Mallory and, I don't know her rank, from the police department, Trena Beltrami, they gave excellent presentations, they were very knowledgeable in their field, and everyone that went came away with a very good understanding of what to do in a certain situation like that. And those who didn't go now have the opportunity, for those who attended, to relay that information, so it was a very, very good presentation, excellent, and they are, they are doing this for local businesses that asked for this. And again, you can say, it, it can happen anywhere, any place, any community, and, you know, in town hall, we're next to a police station, but in a few minutes, you know, anything can happen, so it is very timely training, and our department did a great job, and I just wanted to commend them for that training and, and the information they imparted upon those who attended. And they are, they are willing and able to do this for any organization or company in the community that wants to do that, so. With that, that ends my report.
Any questions for the manager? Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Ward reports.
Five.
Real quick, the Mattson Ridge kind of development, they will be connecting the utilities at some point. Some people are concerned because of Green Bush Elementary School being so close. I've been told by the planner that it should be a minimal impact, it should be done fairly quickly once they do the work, it should be just a minor inconvenience, they will keep one lane of traffic open, so hopefully that will not affect the flow of traffic to a great degree and, you know, hopefully it'll go without issue.
Thank you.
Three streets were just paved with, two with CDBG money in Ward Four, one being Nestor Street, one being School Street. There's still thirty thousand dollars in CDBG money remaining. Edge Street was paved, which is located off of church and back in the back class, that was done with road bond money. There's still road bond money remaining, how much I, I couldn't tell you right now, I'm waiting for Kristen to get back, but I can hopefully have that for you for the next council meeting. That's positive things. The only real negative thing I, I have, and I'm gonna keep bringing it up, and I know we talked it to death tonight, was the, the yellow bin located on Revere Avenue. And all the trash and the junk that had been out there was moved, but it was moved out on the, to the left of the vacant convenience store, and it's behind a fence. So, I'd like that, just talk to the owner and get rid of it, 'cause we've done this for a year now. So, and while we're talking on that subject, I think, I'm just gonna speak for Ward Four, I'd like to know how many bins are in my ward, and I'd like it by Friday, please. I think two months to go through the bins in, in the whole town, can send a high school kid to do it in about two days. So, I don't know who you get to do it, I don't care, but I, I want it done in my ward. Thank you. That's it for Ward Four.
Three.
So, the drainage project in Shippee Ave has begun. It's still on pace to be finished by the end of October, and I'm gonna be getting updates regularly, every seven to ten days, or, or more often as we need it, of what's going on with the residents there, keeping everybody up to date. So, that's a, that's a great thing for Ward Three. And this is like a Ward Two thing, but I wanna say, awesome, and I'm sure you're gonna mention it. If I'm not Portuguese, but honorary Portuguese today, I promised the girls at the, the sports club, they don't wear their shirts, so we're not in need, so they can't yell at me that I don't wear. What are you talking about?
Couple of things. First, obviously, the feast. The feast went off with very minimal issues, very big crowds this year, the weather cooperated, which is the first time in many years, it's usually one day gets full rain, whether it's a Sunday or a Monday, like last year. Nobody realized, we didn't have a parade last year on Sunday. But this year, all three days, all four days went off without a hitch. Saturday, very busy down there with Dirty Deeds. The crowd was pretty heavy, but the police department and the crowd was pretty good, there was no major issues. I think we got a report between all the clubs, under ten, ten issues, maybe even less. And if anybody remembers back when two thousand and six, when Angelo, when you and I got elected, this crowd in August would be filled with people concerned about the issues down there, 'cause it'd be fifty, sixty incidences, so they've done a real good job down there. I think it was a big success for the town and for the Portuguese Holy Ghost Society. So, hopefully next year, great rides, the kids really liked it, so excellent. And George Rere played on Sunday night, he drew a crowd of about fifteen hundred, the two thousand people were in that vicinity, so that was excellent. With that being said, hope it continues next year. The other thing too, I met with Cardy and DOT earlier last week to go over what they're gonna be doing as far as paving and repaving. And their initial plans were, for Cardy. And their initial plans were, for Cardy, was the bridge up to Family Dollar and parts of Maple and parts of East, part of East Main. Talking to DOT and Mario Feria, who is the head guy that was working on the project down there, we met with DOT, and they pushed, along with, over the year, other state senators and representatives pushed to get the state to do that. They approved Cardy to go ahead instead of having a second company come in and do paving on one half and then pave it on the other. So they approved Cardy to come in and pave from the roundabout Pike Street, East Main Street, and Main Street from the bridge, over the bridge, about, I think it's about 50 feet over the bridge, up to Pike Street at the corner of Pike and Main. So that's all going to be repaved. Now, they're looking at timeline, mid-September, early October. That was the last timeline that they gave me. But they also gave us a list, which I sent over to the manager, DPW, which was Freddie Gill at the time, and MOC. And there's a request that we also help out with this. So here's an opportunity. There's some sewer caps that need to be replaced, and they said that that would be the sewer department's responsibility to take care of that, so if we can get with them. Also, the Portuguese community has come to me, and Matthew can speak on, because his father came to me years ago to talk about redoing the lines back to the old-fashioned way in the 80s and 70s, which were red, green, and yellow. Unfortunately, DOT cannot do red, green, and yellow, so they said they can do red and green. But with that being said, I gave, I sent over directions on who to contact, Nicole Pope and another gentleman, and we have to get the paperwork in. They said it would cost nothing up to that point, because whether it's yellow or red and green, it's the same price. You just have to file the paperwork to make sure the town wants to change it to red and green. Now, that would go from the rotary down to up over the top of, and Pike Street, if there's, actually, there's no two lanes in Pike Street, so there's really no yellow line, no lines in between yet. So it'll be Main Street up, East Main, up to, I'm not sure if the lines will go all the way to Main Street, but then Main Street to the Portuguese Holy Ghost Society.
Can we make it authentic, like those old pictures where it's like-
You can't, you can't get the red, like I said, the authentic was the red, green, and yellow in the middle. They can't, they can't do it that way. Has to be two lines, red and green. I think that's the predominant colors right now, a little bit of yellow on the flag, so. Again, the town has to do their due diligence to get that going. So I just request, I just want somebody to take the lead on it. I sent it over to you, and I just want somebody to take the lead on it. The Portuguese community really wants to see it come back, and I think this is a great opportunity where it's not going to cost us anything. There may be a little bit of discussion of going from Dunkin' Donuts to Holy Ghost on the expense of that, and we need to look at that. And if it is to expend, you know, I could reach out to the Holy Ghost and a couple other clubs, because they also want to bring it back. So if we can, they're going to, Mario is going to get with DOT and get a price on that, if there is any issues. If not, they may try to throw it in. Again, that's going to be mid-September, early October, and finally, East Main Street will be a smoother run. That's all I really have.
Did you trip there when you were walking, right?
But that's all I have. One?
Just a thank you from Judy T. with our picture for the donation, the books here, whoever wants to look at it. She thanked the council, if you want to pass it around. Speaking of lines and roads, kids all went back to school. The crosswalks were supposed to be done a month ago, when I brought it up, that they were getting painted. Doesn't make any sense that after the kids go to school, the crosswalks and the lines and the road are not done. So I think David just left, because I think he got broken in the first time. But Ernie, that's something to look at. Why, why so long? If that's on the list, too, like everything else. The other thing is, just following up on the Natick Bridge, East Avenue Bridge, and the Providence Street Bridge, if you got any answer from DOT?
No, I haven't. You know, they would be responding to the council, because the council sent the letter. I have some individuals that I have been dealing with.
Did they give you an answer, why the barrels are on a brand-new bridge?
No, I don't know.
Well, I think Mazulo put it, called the feds anyway on it, because it was federal money, so now we can skip the state, because then, obviously, they're not answering us, so we'll get an answer from the feds. The second thing is, I was going to get together with David, I have some money left on road bond money.
We got to talk about that.
Yeah, because I'm getting all different prices.
There's a couple of roads on mine that's actually half yours, on the Mellow Street, half was yours.
I don't know, I got to look through the list.
So we got to go through that list, we got to sit down, because there's a little discrepancy, and I meant to tell you this.
Yeah, well, we get different answers on different prices. It's been going on for 10 years. One month, you got 30,000, the next month you got 100,000.
Well, I think she sent us over the list, and it's pretty dead on as far as a list.
I don't know, I didn't go through it.
But when I went through the list, you know, Mellow Street is half yours, half mine, and it was paved and drainage, so, but the drainage was done through CDBG, but the road bond portion, I should be getting a little bit of credit for that back for Ward Two.
The other thing is, how about that group home, Ernie? Did, did someone reach out to you?
Yes, we scheduled a meeting-
Tanglewood?
Yes, we had a meeting. Major Levine and I met with the program manager that oversees the group homes that are here in West Warwick, as well as one of their clinical directors. Again, it was a very good meeting. We expressed the concerns that were raised at the council meeting, as well as through conversation that I've had. Any, as I said, the issues were, you know, parking issues, which many of them were just, you know, good neighbor, you know, parking issues, you know. As you said, you don't park in front of a mailbox, you don't park too close to a driveway entrance. So upshot is, is that the company or the representatives are going to develop a parking plan, and they'll submit that to Major Levine to take a look at. They're very receptive. You know, they have five staff and five employee, five staff and five residents at the facility, but they have multiple vehicles that come in throughout the day for different specialties. So they do have a lot of vehicles, but, you know, they have space in front of their own property where, I believe they're going to park their vehicles that go in and out, you know, from their company. Staff will park within their lot, and that could be five, and there could be others. So they're going to develop a plan and return that, I would believe, very shortly to Major Levine to review and comment on. They also talked about some of the issues that, with the neighbors, as far as noise. And they are going to be developing some policies, or reviewing policies with their staff, and going over with their residents about noise and dealing with issues as, you know, dealing with issues rather than like calling for rescues, because that, you know, creates its own issues. So the meeting was very good, they were very receptive. You know, one of the issues seems to be is that some of the residents don't really know who to call if there is local issues. And that issue, we also spoke about that being addressed. They're going to develop some flyers that they can send to, or give to, the neighbors on who to call for what. And so everything that we brought up, they appeared to be very receptive of dealing with the issues. We even, we talked about, again, you know, the turnover of staff, because that was brought up, and that is always an issue, you know, turnover of staff. But the policies they'll put in place, they'll go over with the staff, they'll go over with the residents, and hopefully, you know, many of the issues can be, if not resolved, lessened, so it's not as much of a inconvenience.
Yeah, like, again, even if they got a contact number where the neighbors have a problem, they can call.
And they agreed to do that, and I have that information as well. And I will be reaching out to Mrs. Wilbur, who I spoke to, who also was at the meeting and advising her of what is going on. But I would expect that should be resolved within, you know, at least a week from now. They were very receptive.
Thank you. I'm all set.
All right. One last thing, got a citation here, special recognition from the governor. Town of West Warwick, in recognition for your successful execution for joining the state of Rhode Island, e-permitting online portal, your efforts to allow residents and businesses of your community to apply for permits and licenses online, is indicative of your remarkable, remarkable commitment to making this process more transparent and business-friendly. In appreciation of your dedication to this project, I'm pleased to issue this certificate of recognition, and you have my best wishes for continued success. So I just want to pass that along to the council. And that's all I have.
Up-
Go ahead.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Tax Board of Review, alternate member with term to expire 10/21. West Warwick Public Library Trustees, oh, that was Phil's name, Board of Tenant Affairs, one term to expire 3/20/20. Public, one to expire 4/20/20. Public, one to expire 4/20/20. Clyde Towers, one to expire 4/20/20. West Warwick Manor, one to expire 8/20/20. West Warwick Manor. Zoni Board of Review, one term to expire 7/23. One term to expire 7/20/20. Arctic Redevelopment Commission, one term to expire 10/2018. Public comment, comments will only be addressed by the town council, will take them under advisement. When addressing the town council, please state your name and address, please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens assessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body, but heard as requested.
Hello.
Anything from the council, hold on a second. Anything from the council first? No, Hannah?
Hannah Spodnik, Carpenter Court. This is actually for you, Ernie, because I didn't get a chance to ask a question after your ward, after your report. Using the term surplus is dangerous. It's, it's, could give people the wrong impression, but in general, can you tell me what our status is with the Auditor General? Are we at an acceptable level with the Auditor General as far as how things are going in this town?
The answer to your question, I believe they are satisfied with the progress that's being made, from where the town was a year ago-
Right.
-to where it is today. I believe they're, they're encouraged and encouraged in the right, in the directions that we're going in. We have monthly conference calls and sometimes face-to-face meetings with the Auditor General, his staff, the Department of Revenue, Division of Municipal Affairs, where we check in. It's like a check-in call.
Right.
And we've been updating them as we go, and I believe that they are optimistic in the way things are going. Clearly, as I said, there are many, many things to do to get back to where the town needs to be, but I think, I would just say they are, you know, cautiously optimistic that we are-
That was the term I was looking for, was the cautiously.
In a direction-
Right.
-to try to slowly restore, you know, the reserves to where they need to be.
Right.
To, so the answer to your question, I believe that they're cautiously optimistic that we're moving in a positive direction, with much work to do.
Well, I'm not bringing this up to admonish the work you've done, because I think you've really done an excellent job, from what I've just heard tonight. But again, I just want to make sure that the public knows that we're not out of the woods, because as I said, when people use, the one thing I always did with budgets is very carefully use the word surplus, because the, you know, the general public is going to hear, oh, we've got a surplus, we've got a surplus, we're fine. We're not.
No. It's a, well, you could say it's an undesigned reserve. I mean, that's, surplus was the old jargon. Undesignated reserve is the term today. The charter calls it something different, cash reserve.
Yes.
So again, it is the amount of money that is available in case of emergency, in case of something happening, unpredictable, and fiscal stability. So, you know, clearly, it's a small amount. It's growing.
Takes a minute. You're, it's all, you're fine. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Tom Oates, Colonial Way. I got two quick items I'm going to make as short as possible here. Angelo, I was reached out by a constituent of yours during the meeting. She's a good friend of mine. And the house next door at 66 Harding Street is an abandoned piece of property. It looked like it was a wonderful home at one time, but they're being overrun with all kinds of critters, mice, rats, all sorts of rodents, the smell emanating from the house, nobody mows the lawn, siding is falling off, and it's become a total disaster.
Tommy, did she make a, I didn't get a call on that.
No, no.
I know which house she's talking about, it was one of the employees at the school that just abandoned it.
I believe that's exactly correct.
Yeah.
And now, currently, they're having issues. They've trapped possums, raccoons to relocate. I was over there the other day.
Did she call the building official?
No, she wanted me to, she just sent me this message to reach out, to find out who to contact about this mess.
Ernie, can we take care of that tomorrow? 66 Harding?
Yeah, that, that will be looked at tomorrow.
Great, thank you very much. That's Felisa. Now, my issue. Back in October, I'm sure you guys are all aware of the Brian Messier memorial stone that was taken from a piece of town property on Manchester Street and dumped with a big pile of trash, and it looks like town trash. It's old baseball jerseys, baseball, the bases, the ski boots, tennis rackets, all sorts of garbage, and a whole pile of other debris that's dumped down that embankment. And Brian Messier's stone, the pieces of it, wound up floating down that hole with the words up where you could read it, and it was rather disgraceful. I'm, I don't know if it's a challenge I'm going to ask, but I'm going to ask the councilman, if you could possibly reach out to any of your constituents, businessmen, benefactors, anyone that might be interested in possibly helping out and sponsoring a replacement of this stone. This morning, I reached out to Centerville Bank, and the young lady that would be taking care of something like that, she's going to call me tomorrow. I don't think it would be a huge amount of money. Chief Verone just told me this evening that they have a gentleman in the fire department that does the engraving. Maybe we could work out a deal. And with the Messier family that I've been in contact with, right along with this Nancy and Steve and Mom, who's not very well these days, they would love to see this stone, if we can get it replaced, now placed where baseball is played, and that's down at Natick. And I know that's the Angelo Pastore Field, so we wouldn't want to do any changes there, but the possibility of erecting the stone in front of the flagpole where the, the small remnant of that stone now sits.
Not a problem. Get ahold of me, we'll do something with the businesses to donate.
Tommy, that Crompton Field, that was, I don't know who cleaned that off or how that got there, like you say, that's not even town property. So I don't know if they had a landscaper come in and just remove everything, or what.
The baseball field is not-
No, that's, that whole complex, no, Crompton, well, that back in the day, yes, but that Crompton Field is all owned by Crompton vets. They just let the town use it. They let the football league and whoever.
Because it, well-
They've always been very cautious about letting-
The only thing that was disturbing with that whole thing is that we were told that that stone was in the possession of DPW.
And it was not.
It wasn't told it was in possession, it was told in time, I was out of town, I was messaging you-
Right.
-that it was going to be taken care of, and it never got taken.
Well, if I recall back, we spoke about it at a couple meetings, and you had asked it to be taken care of immediately. And then I believe you were informed that it indeed had been.
It was going to be taken-
No, it had been. I'll get the tape.
Regardless, it hadn't been, and it was there for quite some time, and some local people went down with some heavy equipment and pulled it up. But on that subject, down that embankment at Flat Top, it's a disaster. There are truckload after truckload of sand. There are truckload after truckload of sand dumped down in there. It's just dumped. There's large piles of asphalt that's been all overgrown with vegetation, but it's asphalt, there's three huge piles, brush, all kinds of debris that seems to be dumped. It's a dump.
I went saw, it's a dumping.
It's a dump, and I don't know who would be taking care of that, but it was, it's just an awful mess down there. So if, you know, maybe we could reach out to some of your friends, business or benefactors in the community that might be able to help out. I don't think it's gonna cost a lot of money. And I'm gonna reach out to a friend and see if we can take a ride up to North Smithfield tomorrow and look at stones, because I have a place up there, I guess you can just look around, see what you like, and we'll make a price and then find somebody to do the engraving. But I think it would be a great thing if we could get that replaced in memory of Brian Messier. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good job.
Thank you.
Alan Palazzo, Five Robin Lane, and I'm gonna be quick. On a positive note, I just wanna be on the record for a couple of things. They were talking, you guys were talking about a generator. Way back when, the town had somebody designated to look at military surplus. Benny Maguera, I'm not sure if it was in his capacity as DPW or on the council, but he was very fond of doing that. I'm not sure if there's anybody now, but you might wanna look at that. There's a lot of stuff out there. I know Dick Deere used to give military surplus stuff, but there's a lot of stuff to a municipality would be cheap. That's number one. Number two, I don't know what kind of reports you guys get for each meeting. I would, I'm a kiss principal type and put it on one sheet. I would suggest, in the old days, they used to have it on the council report, you would have the budget, what you brought in, they'd have the departments, what the budget was, what the expenditure was, and you can go and read if they're over, and just the percentage, really quick, look at it and you'll know what it is. Same thing with tax collection. Third item, we're almost two years into.
So we do do monthly reports, they go to the council on the budget, all departments, by-line item and revenues as well.
Very simple, I mean, one page. I used to brief the entire sixth fleet in fifteen minutes every morning, going through war and peace, so I'm a believer in one piece of paper and you only handle a piece of paper once. But back to Centerville Bank and things, two items. Please get a clock in here, and it's been two years since Mr. Trump has been elected president.
But they didn't mail it out, usually they mail it to us.
Frank Giorgio, I had to harass him a long time ago to get one of Obama, and he actually presented it, beat up on the Republicans, but, you know, have George Washington and Trump, that's it.
I even called Washington and they said they were gonna send two. I said, one for me and one for town hall, and I'll pay for them.
They, they usually, they usually send them out, they have not sent them out.
Beat up on them. And the third item, that's near and dear to my heart, or fourth item, actually, I'm gonna have five. The Natick Bridge, somebody posted a picture of the flood in two thousand and ten with Natick underwater. My considerable opinion is that was caused by the silting up of the river due to the culverts that were installed on Route Two way back when. Somebody, some, they cut it off.
When they, when they did the mor.
Exactly, the culverts.
They made the river, I know because they had a class action suit. When they first built the mor, and I'm not gonna get into the whole thing, where that river went straight where the automotive was. They paid some, and I'm not gonna mention who, but the governor was paid off then to fill in the river, load after load from the state of Rhode Island, and they cut the river three-quarters of it off. It goes like this, and it's like having an eighteen-inch pipe into a four-inch pipe.
And that's the problem, that flood, somebody said a hundred-year flood, that, it's not a matter of if that's gonna happen again, it's when. And the Army Corps of Engineers needs to go down there and pull it, and the town needs to go on record to them officially saying, hey, we don't wanna wait until we get another flood, investigate it now. And Mr. Bedula brought up the East Natick Bridge and the Natick Bridge. About twenty years ago when they redid Providence Street, I know something about putting paint on metal, and those guardrails were not properly preserved. I already talked to Dave about this earlier. They would just paint it over and that's why in the intervening time, they all chipped off. The past week, they've been working on that bridge, I drove by this morning and those rails are white. You've gotta let the preservative, the primer, dry for a certain period of time, I don't know if they did it, but somebody needs to take a look at it. It's a state road, but where the hell are the ride-out inspectors? And that's all I'm gonna say, one more time, happy birthday, old man.
Thank you, Alan.
John Reed, sixty-two Andrews Avenue. I think after our last episode with the town solicitor and what's been going on in the past few weeks, I spoke to you, David, about taking him before the disciplinary board and the ethics commission, you said you didn't wish to. I think at this point the council's kinda forced to. I mean, these are constituents, he can't talk to them like they're animals, all right? The bully in the schoolyard, he better grow up. And I think you guys need to take account, what are you gonna do with him?
Council's only need to discuss that with the next four weeks.
Four weeks?
Council meeting anyway.
And you said that you weren't sure on how to do it? I'm sure the prosecutor will be able to write up the forms for you.
The disciplinary, disciplinary board, I'm not sure, again, I've had this conversation with you, I'm not sure what they can and can't do, I'm not.
Well, he's a lawyer. He has ethics. They have a disciplinary council. And you have the power to fire him, which you should do, but I doubt will happen.
We can have a conversation.
Well, I think you, it's time to have a conversation.
He has the right to come before the council, whether it's in public or executive session to talk, and we can talk there.
First of all, the solicitor, I'm gonna give my two cents. The only way that a solicitor should be heard or, or to speak is if one of the council asks for a legal opinion or one of the council is answering something that he's not supposed to. He's not supposed to talk to the constituents, to anyone in, in town hall, and it's been going on for too long and I'm sick of it.
The town council president gave us parameters the last time he freaked out.
Supposed to have an apology, I never heard.
He was supposed to give us an apology.
I'd like to ask a question.
David did, okay?
Because I did not let him speak, and I told him that, and that's plain and simple. But, Mr. Reed, the, the one thing that I will say, and we've had this conversation numerous times, is tonight, Mr. Palazzo asked if his bills was being paid, if his bills were up to D. Unfortunately, unfortunately, she was not here, because I said she's in the hospital, which might be out by now, but Mr. Manager could not answer, so I did call on him to answer that.
Yeah, but why, I mean, you just push his buttons? I love to play poker with, I take his underwear home, okay? So I, I just think it's public and I would ask you to instruct the clerk to write in detail that you had to throw him out of here tonight, because that's gonna become valuable in the future. The last report was kinda vague, but we have the tape. But this one here, you as the town council president dismissed them. It needs to be in the minutes in detail. Do we agree?
It's on tape.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Jay, you got a comment?
No, you just answered it. I, I was in the hall, I had recused myself, but this whole thing happened, so just wanted to know what was said.
Solicitor gave a comment back to Mr. Palazzo, and, and I'm not even sure, I'm gonna go back and listen to tape, I don't know what it was. I gavelled him, I told him enough, and I told him to excuse himself, as you were out in the hallway.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? I oppose.